Oh, yeah, I will have to see. What department? Do you have her direct line? Okay, yeah, I would have to look it up, or if you can tell it to me, I can transfer you. She's just not in our department, so I'm not sure. Yeah. Okay, all right, well, let me know. Okay, thank you. Bye.
Good afternoon, everyone. Dennis, can anyone hear me? Can anyone hear me?
I can. I just can't find the unmute button.
It's too long to do that. Hey, Dennis, I just wanted to let you know that this is the beginning staff board review. It starts at 3 o'clock, so we go through this with staff. Then we have a planning and zoning commission study session, and then we have the hearing. So the hearing won't start till 5:30, and then I think the case, so, well, actually, I think you actually, I'm sorry, you're here for the study session. That won't start till 4 o'clock, so.
All right, Mr. Short, my clock says 4 o'clock, so why don't you go ahead and start the study session, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll go ahead and begin with the cases for next month on, they're scheduled for February 23rd. The first case is CUP 21052. It's a request for conditional use permit for an occupational therapy clinic that utilizes equine therapy. That's a cottage industry and an equestrian facility. And that is on 1.04 acres in the AR zone. It's located in Timberline, and the applicant is Lauren Hall, and Zach has that case. He's ready to present for us.
Thanks, Bob. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. So this case, this is where the property is located. You can see that it's surrounded by other AR zoning, except for, on the east, is Coquenino National Forest. This is for a combined cottage industry and equine use. So the owner of the property is going, would run a therapy business, including equine therapy from this barn here. And this is where the house is. They would have two employees that are volunteers, and the hours of operation would be from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. They would usually just have one family on site for an appointment that usually takes about an hour. And this was originally scheduled for a few months back for hearing, but staff noticed that this barn where they have one horse that's part of the use is too close to the property line. The requirement of the zoning ordinance is 55 feet away from the property line for places where livestock or horses are shed, fed, sheltered, or watered, and this is only about 19 feet away. So this was put on hold until February so that the applicant could get a variance from the Board of Adjustment. They did do that. As far as this conditional use, it's not a very high impactful use. Many of the neighboring property owners also have animals that they keep. And this property owner has been keeping up with the newer management and that sort of thing. So that would be some of the conditions that staff would recommend. Just keeping with the small amount of appointments and people on the property at the same time, and also keeping up with the manure management. But aside from that, not a very impactful use. But I'm happy to take any comments, questions, things to look into as I do the staff report for this case.
Mr. Schwartz, this is Chair Antivarius. I'm not seeing any questions. So why don't we go ahead and move on to case number two, please, on the study session?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. We want the case number two. This is case number CUP 21072. It's a request for conditional use permit. That's previously CUP 16020 for a solid waste transfer station. That's a utility facility on 9.73 acre parcel in the general zone. Subject property is located at Clover Drive. On Clover Drive in Mormon Lake, and the applicant is the Mormon Lake Properties, and Zach has this case as well.
Thank you, Bob. So this case, what I have on the screen for you right now is Mormon Lake. So this is Lake Mary Road, and this is Mormon Lake Road. And I just wanted to show you this map because prior to 2016, Public Works, so, can you, can you hear me, Bob?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. So prior to 2016, Public Works was handling a transfer station here near Lake Mary Road. And the original approval of this CUP in 2016 moved it down to near where the Mormon Lake Lodge area is. And Mormon Lake Lodge was taking over management of the transfer facility. So I wanted to show you this map. The hash red is Mormon Lake Lodge Resort Commercial Zone area. And these are all AR zone agricultural residential, single-family residential zone properties. This is the transfer station property, and this is where the transfer station has been located. You'll see that there's some FEMA floodplain on the property. And here's a site plan of the property, so you can see here's a gravel area, a few dumpsters here. This is a six-foot solid wood fence. And you probably saw in your packet for the hearing that was canceled due to lack of quorum on the sixth of the month. That staff had written up a staff report for this, and there were some compliance issues that were found. So there were big piles of construction material, and some this is a manufactured home, a dilapidated manufactured home that's outside of the fenced transfer station area. So a lot of these things are located, this would be where the manufactured home is located. Many of the piles of construction material are in this area, which is flood zone. So staff had tried reaching out to the applicant a number of times to see whether or not the applicant wanted to modify the conditional use permit to add more space, in which case maybe some additional screening and that sort of thing would be necessary or something to look at. Also, to look at whether or not floodplain permitting could allow piles within the flood zone or what could be done to that extent. The applicant has not returned calls or emails to me, but I know that Scott Gold, the owner of Mormon Lake Lodge Properties, has a call in with the Director Jay. So hopefully, we can get in contact and figure out a way forward on that. I think the biggest thing about this is that it's a, it's a good service for the Mormon Lake area. We just have a couple of issues that we need to discuss. How should we move forward on? I think also, the original approval in 2016 did not include a requirement for this fencing here to be wildlife friendly. The urban wildlife planner and I went to the property, noticed that a lot of it was in disrepair. So we thought maybe they could retrofit it or possibly remove it. I haven't had any contact back from the applicant about that. But I know that the property owner and the applicant, they've discussed with Jay that this is sort of a money-losing venture for them. And so I don't think that they would want to spend a whole lot of money in doing that kind of thing, but maybe possibly just removing it. There was also a requirement from 2016 that some landscaping be placed in here between the residential and the actual transfer station fenced in area, and that hadn't been done yet. So staff will be trying to get with the applicant again and seeing what we can do to move forward. But that's all the information that I have for the commission at this time. And if you have any comments, questions, advice, anything, I'm happy to take it.
Okay, again, Mr. Schwartz, I am not seeing any hands raised or anyone being unmuted. So let's go ahead and move on to case number three in the study session, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next case is CUP 21073, a quest for conditional use permit. Renewal of CUP 17034 for a 10-space recreational vehicle park with modifications to add RV storage spaces on a 2.0 acre parcel in the PC zone where CH 10,000 standards have been applied. This property is located on Route 66 in Belmont. The applicant is Joel Gabbard. And Kelly has this case and is ready to present.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. You may recognize this case. I believe I presented it at a study session a month or two ago, on December 1st. To refresh your memory, here's an aerial photo. You'll see I-40 to the north and Route 66 to the south. The storage spaces, if you can see my cursor, are going to be along the backside of the property closer to I-40. And I'll show you a quick street view. This is from I-40. And this is from Route 66. The request is to add the five additional storage spaces. They're not looking to change anything else, just renew everything else as it is. You'll see a space, it's a camping spot over here on the right. The applicant has been asked to remove this completely, and I'll be checking for that when I go visit the site next week. And as a refresher, I've included the conditions for you here, if you'd like to reference them. Again, we'll just be checking to make sure that that RV spot has been removed when we post the site. If there are any other comments or questions from the commission, I will take those now.
Okay, Ms. Bingham, I'm not seeing anyone. So let's go ahead and move on. Mr. Short, to item number four on the study session agenda, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This case is ZC 21013, a request for a zone change from the general zone to the RC zone on a 106 acre parcel for the development of a 150 unit recreational vehicle park and resort. Subject property is located at 581 Cooper Ranch Road Northwest of Williams and adjacent to the city boundary. And the applicant in this case is Bernie Correa of Auto Camp. Let me go and share my screen, not quite as fast as these other guys were, but and, and we can discuss the case. Okay, so as I said, this is Auto Camp Zone Change, ZC 2113. And the proposal is changes zoning from general to resort commercial. Develop 150 space RV park, and this would have basically Airstreams and Park Models. So they're set up for short-term rental. It's not a traditional RV park where people bring their own RVs. They would come and stay in these kind of classic types of RVs. And that's basically, it's kind of a nostalgia thing for them. The project would also include a clubhouse, swimming pool, small general store, maintenance buildings, and employee housing. And this is a vicinity map showing the subject property. You can see Williams Downtown over here. This is, this is the Gonzalez Ranch site. There's actually a proposal for a very large development right here. Includes a lot of housing and some other things as well, I believe. This is the subject property. You can see the access road goes across the national forest, and I'll go and pull up another map in a second into the subject property. And this, this is Cooper Ranch Road right here. Comes in, goes through some G-zone properties, and then provides access for the, some AR five properties as well. This is a larger development over inside the city of Williams. You can see the white line right here shows the boundary of the city of Williams, so it's right across the boundary. The applicant had, has had discussions with Williams about annexing into the city. But right now, the, the city is a fairly small staff, and they have not really had time to deal with that at the moment. They have a lot of other things to work with. So this is a site plan showing the site. You can see where the access road would come in. Like this, we're having discussions about what exactly to do with the access road, whether it should be chip sealed or paved, and are also having some discussions about the road that's off the site and what kind of improvements might be required for that. They have provided a preliminary TIA. Public Works Department has looked at and indicated it's sufficient. It shows that the project would be viable, but of course, there'll be more information about that coming down the road. So this road would come in, there's a parking area right there, and then there's roads off to all of the sites. One of the things I wanted you to notice, I'll go ahead and move back to this other map, is that the project is basically contained right in here. They have provided some photo sims. I didn't put those on here, but the photo sims basically show that the RV park would not be visible. There would not be any RVs in this area or in the meadows, so it would just be contained in this area where it would be hidden by the trees. And of course, there's quite a bit of a buffer zone they're providing between here this meadow and these trees and the adjacent properties. Okay, so this is, this is a rendering of some of the buildings. They're looking at, like I said, a clubhouse and a general store and some employee housing and also some maintenance buildings. So this is some, I'll say, pretty preliminary ideas about what those will be. They didn't want to do a lot of design work up front since this hasn't been approved yet. And then I wanted to kind of show you, just give you a little idea about the layout of the RVs. This would, this shows what two would look like. They look like Airstreams, you know, they would have a picnic table and a place to sit around. Looks like a fire ring and then a little deck on there, kind of a way of providing some nostalgia, you know, for people by providing these old, actually, new versions of the very old models of Airstreams. And the applicant is here. If you have any questions for the, for the applicant. Are there any questions for me at this point?
I, yes. I, I think both this project and the previous one that Kelly was discussing be appropriate to take a look at our list of 15 items that we've developed over the last few years to mitigate offsite impacts on these types of installations. Especially this one is right up against National Forest, so hopefully, when you work up the conditions, go over that list, hopefully get in touch with the National Forest representative on this case especially, see how they react to to having this there, if there are any particularly sensitive sites around, or how they'd like to handle people entering the forest. I think we made a lot of progress over the last few years, and it's hopefully in this list, which I guess maybe we should send around to the commissioners. I think maybe we've done that before, I'm not sure. There may be other things they'd like to add.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. I think that, that's a really good idea. Thanks for reminding us of that. Because those would be, we are looking at with with the pine breeze, and there is a modification to that, so that does provide an opportunity to upgrade some of the conditions that they have. So we can look at which one of ones of those would be appropriate at this time. And I'm glad you mentioned that, because I don't believe we did that last time, so that would give us the opportunity to do that. And in this case as well, as you can see, they are proposing fire rings. They are in a forested area. We're still working out issues that for what kind of fire service they would have, so there's quite a bit to, still to look at on this. Otherwise, it, it is a complete application. It is something that, you know, will require a little bit more analysis. I did contact the District Ranger in this area for Kibbad National Forest. She did call me back yesterday. You kind of brought that to mind. I was kind of busy today, wasn't able to call her back, but she did call me yesterday. So we'll call her back and discuss whatever kinds of issues or concerns that the National Forest might have on this project.
It does look like we've got some fire danger here, prevailing winds out of the west. It's a little hard to see on this scale, but it looks like a pretty thick canopy there. So we certainly want to make sure that the applicant is ready for fire and ready to evacuate. Doesn't look like it'll be a problem, but it's certainly a consideration.
Bob, I've got one thing for you. I took a look at the County Public Works Road Data Report. Latest one I have is 2019. And Cooper Road is not listed as a county road. And I don't believe the county has accepted any new roadway easements in the intervening two years, or almost two years since that report was put together. So I know that that was a question in your mind. And perhaps it would have an effect on how this is looked at down the road.
Commissioner Ruggles, thanks for that. We, we have, I did get some information today. We, I think there was some thought that we had an IGA with the city of Williams for this road, but I think it was confirmed that we don't have an IGA with the city of Williams to maintain this road. It is on the National Forest. I'm not aware at this time, and possibly the applicant could answer this question for, for us. He is here. If there's some type of easement that goes through here, maybe it might be appropriate to create a road maintenance district possibly for this area. Like I had said earlier, if you look at this aerial, this is the site of the Gonzalez Ranch Development, which is looking at a very large development. So possibly, I don't know, at this point, they, they might need more access. Down Cooper Ranch Road, they only have one of their access off to the west. So that's definitely, the roads are one of the most the biggest issue with this at this point, you know, what kind of roadway should we have? Or should, should the county require, what kind of roadway can the county require? That's the, to me, that's, that's one of the biggest impacts. I think some of the neighbors would definitely see other impacts potentially. But for, I mean, right now, it's a very slow road. There isn't much going on there. There's only a few properties that access it, as you can see right here. And this will create a lot more traffic on this road, so that's definitely an important issue. In terms of, I believe it was, Commissioner Best was talking about the, the fire. I have talked to the applicant about the need to possibly thin the forest in this area. I'm not sure what the status of that was. That would be a good conversation with National Forest as well to make sure that, you know, the fire damage, potential fire danger is addressed. And of course, also work with the fire chief on that.
Okay, Mr. Short, I see Mr. Correa. I hope I pronounced that right. I see his hand raised. That is, I believe, the applicant in this case. While we're on this subject, I do have a question unrelated to that. But why don't we go ahead and have on the applicant address Mr. Ruggles' comments, please?
Yeah. Hey, good afternoon, members of the commission. This is Bernie Correa, Acquisitions Manager at Auto Camp. Thank you for your time today. And I just wanted to share a little bit of insight. Cooper Road, from our research, that is a, a road that is has an easement granted to the county and to the general public for access. As it relates to who maintains it, we heard a few different and conflicting comments over a period of time. It's been, our understanding, the city does some maintenance on it, but regardless of what the current conditions are, we definitely acknowledge the probable need to adjust any agreements or lack of agreements that may be in place. And we are, we and our engineers are available and willing to engage in those conversations with the county and the city as needed to address the impacts accordingly. But that is a easement road granted for the benefit of the county and the public. And then, of course, in relation to fire, Bob did make, you know, we've had a few conversations here, and we're working with a consultant, local consultant, fire and systems, who's working with state and county stakeholders to help us develop a fire mitigation and emergency plan that'll really provide some good thought around this important matter in relation to our project. Our intent is to deliver a project that will improve on the fire safety, not just for the property itself, but for the greater community compared to the current conditions of the property as is today. So we look forward to sharing that information in the coming weeks as it becomes developed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Correa, for those comments and explanation. On the question that I have, Mr. Short, I do see our wildlife planner, Jessica Simmons, on. My question is probably directed on to her, and that is, can you please kind of inform the commission if you have done any kind of analysis about wildlife corridors, any kind of endangered species? Anything that you feel would be relevant on to this case?
Yes, good evening. Thank you. I have. And what I found was there don't seem to be any wildlife corridors specifically in that area, but there's definitely a chance for many species to be big game to just be hanging around. So we would want to see wildlife-friendly fencing. And then I did find a record of bald eagles right on the property from just last year. So I don't have any details on that record, but it looks like they definitely do hang out in the area.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Simmons, for that. And I'm, I'm, I hate to assume, so I'm not going to, but I'm sure that you will be on providing more detailed information that will go into the staff report that will be given to the commissioners on, on these issues.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, okay, appreciate it. And that is all of the questions that I have. On, do the commissioners have any other questions for Mr. Short or the applicant at this time? Okay, Mr. Vice Chair Walters.
I just want to make a note that, that they have all the documentation, signed agreements. The details all worked out on us before the next meeting, so we can make a decision. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Walters. Yes, and certainly if, if this, and it's on the study session this evening to be heard at the public hearing in February. And yes, this commission will move forward on a decision at that time. So all the i's will need to be dotted and all the t's crossed by then. Commissioner Ruggles, I see your hand raised.
Yeah, yeah, just a, a brief comment on the situation with the road. I sat in on the last Board of Supervisors meeting, and Lucinda Andriani did an excellent job of Did an excellent job of presenting all of the, all of the details really. On road maintenance and uh road improvement districts, uh, that is available on YouTube. Uh, or will be available in the minutes from that uh Board of Supervisors meeting. So it might be a good reference for the applicant to take a look at that, uh, she did an excellent uh PowerPoint presentation on that. So it really gives you a heads up on what you have to do if necessary for either of those two improvements.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles, that that is helpful information for the applicant. On, okay, I am not seeing any other commissioners' hands raised or unmuted. So, Mr. Short, let's go ahead and move to the Community Development Department update, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, let's go ahead and move to the update, uh, county is in the negotiations with the candidate for the Assistant Director. Planning Manager position, the the, I will say that that has. Kind of dragged on for a little while, so we'll see what the results of that is. The county's remains on phase two operations for COVID, as you know, probably, I'm not sure. If everyone has seen this, but I've known a lot of people lately who have gotten COVID, so we are, we do have the same. Stipulations in place for our building. Uh, and then I'll go ahead and let Melissa talk about the Donnie Park Timberland Fernwood Area Plan Update. And some other things along this list.
Hi, good evening, Chair Antiveras and Commissioners, um. We are still working on the Donnie Park Timberline Fernwood Area Plan Update, the committee is. Nearing the end. End of their review from the open house comments in September and making modifications to the. Goals and policies, we have started to draft the document. And have tentatively planned a second community open house for. Um, that would be on Thursday, March thirty first. At the out at Cromer Elementary School, so um, that is a tentative date, but we are holding that now. Optimistically thinking that we'll be ready to um have that second open house with the community. What was the next item on that agenda, Bob?
Ms. Shaw, it is the Route sixty six Brownfields EPA Grant.
Thank you, I don't see the agenda on the screen. Um, right, and just to remind everybody that that grant opportunity is still available. Uh, to property owners within Coquigno County, so. It's an opportunity to apply for and have funds available to um. Have properties that potentially have contaminations assessed for. Um, those possible issues and um. It's managed by NACOG, but we are supporting that. And the county is part of that coalition, so. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to to chat about that further, so there, um, it's likely that the grant will be extended. We've got a couple of properties in the county that have been nominated and are working through. Um, are have been awarded funds, so it's a great opportunity for anyone that has a. Uh, commercial property or industrial property that potentially. Actually has contamination to find out what's going on on site, so. Um, please let me know if you've got questions, and then we're also, as you know, continuing to work with the City of Flagstaff on updating the regional plan. We are in the process of producing snapshot webinars every Monday, so those are available. They're half hour. Uh, presentation, question and answer discussions on some of the major topics that will go into forming the basis for the regional plan, so. That process is well underway, and um, if you have any questions again, please, please get in touch with me, and then. Finally, we are also working on our utility scale renewable energy ordinance. And we have scheduled an open house, that will be a virtual open house to begin on February ninth. Uh, we'll have a a one hour live session, and then after that, the open house will be up for a week. For uh people that want to go online, view videos, look at poster boards, and then make comments in the draft ordinance, so. We are planning to move into public hearings with that in March of this year, so um, those are my updates.
Okay, um, thank you, Ms. Shaw. Uh, I'm not seeing any hands raised or on anyone unmuted, so I'm gonna say that. None of the commissioners have any questions for you. Uh, but again, um. Thank you for your invitation, that if ever we want to talk with you about it, we've got an open door with you, that that's appreciated.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Short, the next item on the agenda is the Board of Supervisors' update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On December fourteenth, the board held a public hearing on ZC twenty one oh two twelve oh twelve. And that's the bar patch and zone change, and they approved that zone change. And uh, the next item on the agenda. We actually have Dave Wessel here with the Flagstaff Metropolitan Planning Organization to report on the regional transportation plan. With your blessing, Madam Chair, shall we have Dave go ahead and present?
Oh, absolutely, Miss, Miss, Mr. Wessel, it is all yours, please proceed.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, uh, members of the commission. And county staff, uh, my name is David Wessel, I am the. Planning Manager for Metro Plan, uh, we are the Regional Transportation Planning Organization. Here and I really thank you for your time, I know just from tonight's agenda, you're very busy people. And I will uh do my best to. Be timely, so let me share my screen. And uh. Make sure I get the right. Presentation, here we go. Is everybody able to see uh the screen, okay here?
Uh, it it looks good.
Great, and I'm gonna keep it in this mode because I will be. Uh, taking some notes in a little bit, so again, uh, thank you. Allowing me the time to present Stride Ford, a regional transportation plan. Here's my uh kind of contact information, and just to walk you through what I'm gonna do tonight, give you a little update on uh. An introduction to Stride Ford, uh, what we've been up to, talk a little bit about uh your role as a stakeholder. And ask a a couple brief questions. Some kind of as an icebreaker, but also some to help us uh structure our process. For uh, and I guess before I go, let me just explain a little bit more about uh who we are and what we do. Uh, when the city hit fifty thousand back in nineteen ninety five. In order to continue to it. Be eligible to receive federal transportation and construction dollars, they need to deform this federal federally mandated organization called the Metropolitan Planning Organization. Uh, that happened in September of ninety six, and we've been in operation since. Uh, and we create these regional transportation plans, it's one of our mandated obligations. And they've been fairly instrumental, uh, you know, back in two thousand years, transportation decision, uh, two thousand within the city. Uh, many of the transportation improvements were identified uh in uh. A version of the RTP, the Regional Transportation Plan, and then again in twenty eighteen, an updated version of that. Was the foundation of many of the the projects approved by voters uh in the city then. And so now we're updating that again, and we're looking to deliver strategy and project options with clear cost implications. Um, clarify relationships between economic development and environmental objectives. Uh, as you all are aware, uh, perhaps that the city has adopted a carbon neutrality plan, my understanding is the county is considering. Uh, some climate policies, and we want to incorporate those. We have a very ambitious mission as an organization to create the finest transportation system in the country. Uh, and so that's gonna be one of my questions to you tonight in terms of what that might mean. Uh, there's a lot of planning going on right now, and uh, I'll talk about that in the next slide, we're hoping to integrate those in the process. And uh, part of what we're doing tonight in that this stakeholder outreach is. Really part of our robust public participation effort, and I'll describe a little bit of that. In terms of our planning soup, as I called it. Uh, there's a lot going on. Uh, the mountain line is delivering Flagstaff a motion, the a community transit plan, that's ongoing. The city's active transportation plan is um. Under a public comment period. I mentioned the carbon neutrality plan, uh, has a lot of objectives and targets in it. And then uh, the city and county are working together on the regional plan, really laying the foundation, doing a lot of groundwork now. And we hope to incorporate all of those processes and consider those uh in stride forward. And part of our commitment uh to you is to share information across all of these processes. So that we're all up to date and aware and to limit. Hopefully avoid coming back to you individually as organizations and asking the same questions. All these processes are unique and have uh distinct needs, and so there may be a. You know, multiple visits, but that's um, that's what we're hoping to do. As far as our schedule, we really want to complete this by October of this year, we seem to be on uh thankfully on schedule. What have we been doing to date? Uh, a lot of uh background information, working with the city and county on regional plan, uh, regional snapshots. Lot of great videos, good information, uh, papers are lagging behind, but uh they're being slowly developed. Uh, to complement that, uh. Everything from the regional economy to housing to the environment. Uh, there's gonna be many, many papers there, uh, we're contributing to some of those, uh, we have um. A literary review looking at an important efforts to for travel admin management, vehicle miles, travel reduction. Performance measurements, that'll be available, things like that, we've uh also completed a. A random sample survey that I'll uh reference here shortly. And we're getting moved, ready to move into kind of our next phase where we're developing a couple of scenarios. And I'll describe those for you, and this is really gonna be the the heart of um, of the document. So we are now branded as Stride Ford is the name of the plan, and we have two scenarios that we're developing. One called onward, which is really staying the course with existing transportation and land use plans. You know, the, there is a current uh regional transportation, regional plan in place. A lot of land use projections and assumptions and policies there, uh, we'll look at that, uh, we will um. Make some accommodations for known changes, uh, the hospital relocation uh seems to be. Fairly assured of going forward, so we'll accommodate something like that, even in our uh. Status quo or business as usual plan, we will make uh, uh, as I mentioned, the. Voters approved propositions for nineteen and four twenty. Uh, to a package of road and bike and ped projects in four nineteen and the Lone Tree Overpass in four twenty. Uh, we may make assume some modern, minor modifications to those that are within kind of legal limits, but are a little more sustainable, sustainable. But that's the funding that we have available, and we do need to have some fiscal constraint per our federal mandates. Uh, so this is not, uh, as one transportation planner put it, you know, where uh the rubber hits the sky. This is really where where the kind of the rubber hits the road, we want to make sure that these things are reasonably achievable financially. The other uh scenario to complement onward is upward, I hope you see the the theme here. And this is really reaching for those more ambitious goals, uh, through new interest, transportation endeavor and land use endeavors. So uh, part of the carbon neutrality plan is to look at increased density within city. For a variety of reasons, um. But it can address many issues, we maybe do a little more aggressive modifications to projects, maybe introduce new projects. That would help reduce single occupant vehicle. Will not be fiscally constrained, uh, because, you know, we want to to demonstrate to uh regional authorities, city, county, and others. Here's what it's gonna take to really meet some of these thresholds or targets that have been established. And really, in the history of uh policy setting, uh, there have not been a lot of thresholds or targets set. And really that carbon neutrality plan and the amendment to the regional plan that ensued is really kind of unique. We'll, through our uh public engagement process. Be able to reflect, uh, hopefully back to decision makers, what public attitudes might be towards these various uh. Changes and policies, and we really won't be dictating through this uh scenario what policy should be, but it's more of an educational approach in terms of. Should you reach, you know, shoot for these goals, this is what it's gonna take, this is what it's gonna cost on the transportation front. And uh, again, as you may know, transportation contributes to about forty percent of the greenhouse gas emissions in the area. So when we look at you as stakeholders, you know, this is, you know, the county is a, an important player. Within the region, uh, you heard uh Melissa report very briefly on the Donnie Park. Timberline Fernwood Area Plan, uh, there's a lot of discussion in transportation there as in all of the area plans. In terms of a variety of modal needs, uh, and so we really value uh your time and input. As the county and. Your contribution of experience and perspectives uh is really valued. And so we'll be engaging with you uh throughout, throughout the process. Some additional updates, uh, some email, uh. And in some of those emails, you may see additional questions, and here's my first question. Uh, I'm gonna. Put this to you and I'm gonna take some notes, this is kind of an icebreaker, but it's also. I think relevant, so in your travels, in your experiences, and it doesn't have to be limited to uh. The United States, to our country. Where is the finest transportation you've experienced and what did it look like, or maybe it's just. Uh, an aspect of a system that you engaged, maybe it's, you know, a bicycle system somewhere or transit system somewhere. Or maybe a beautiful parkway, so let's just take a a moment or two, if we could, if you would indulge me and. And share, and I'm just gonna maybe ask, I know there's a lot of people there, so. You know, Madam Chair, if you want to call on people, or we can just see how it works where where people just jump in. Uh, but I'm, I'm gonna take some notes.
So, okay, this, Mr. Wessel, what we're gonna do is um what we always do, which is. Any of the commissioners that would like to comment at this time, would you please raise your hand or unmute? Okay, Commissioner Ruggles, uh, go ahead.
Since you haven't restricted it to uh here in the United States. My impression uh would be Western Europe and the UK with Germany in particular. And at the time I experienced that, it was still West Germany, so things have probably improved a little bit since then.
Commissioner Ruggles, would you like to expound on on what the aspects of that system? Are that you found particularly attractive?
Well, very simply, the fact that public transportation was readily available. In um. Germany, uh, through France, uh, the Netherlands, Luxembourg, uh, very easy to use. Uh, to a lesser degree, uh. In the UK, uh, since you had to know how the intercity bus system worked there. Uh, didn't, uh, didn't take quite so much figuring out, a country like Germany, it was pretty intuitive. Um, even with a very, very limited vocabulary in German. Uh, but the readily available, readily, readily available. Uh, public transportation is what really made the difference, now keep in mind, of course, that uh. It's much smaller land area than we're dealing with uh in the uh US, and of course. The other thing that is peculiar to Coquigno County that would just aggravates that is the size of the county. Uh, and uh, if you were to have a similar public transportation system. Here in another places throughout the US, it would be uh, well, beyond costly. Uh, the other thing I'd add to that, it was um. Well, I I'd classify it as inexpensive.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles, um, I'm looking to see if there is anyone else on. Mr. Wessel, I'm not seeing anybody raising their hand or unmuting on. So. So I'm thinking that might be the answer you're going to get. I, I know personally that I have spent quite a bit of time in New York City. My daughter and I, and I know that we use the subway system a lot there, which made it, which made it very easy to get really wherever we were going. And what helped us the most, because we were on, of course, when we started this, we were less familiar with the city than we are now, was they had an app that kind of, kind of guided us through, okay, here you are, here's where you, where you want to go. Here's, here's the trains you need to take to get there. That was, that was very helpful to us. And like Commissioner Ruggles commented, the cost was very low. So it, so it made it very, very affordable to get literally wherever we wanted to go at a minimal cost.
Excellent, thank you.
We've got Commissioner Burton. And you know, I would, yeah, I would like to open this up also to staff. On, you know what I mean, so Mr. Schwartz, any of the staff that would like to comment on this? I think your comments would be relative, relevant right now as well. Go ahead, Commissioner Burton.
Yeah, so I was, I was gonna go along with your sentiment on the subway system in New York. I've not been to New York, but I have used the systems over in Boston several times. And I like the ease of use and the lower cost if I'm going to visit and just being able to get from point A to point B. And I also definitely agree with John because I am a big lover of the transportation over in Europe, particularly their rail system. I would absolutely love it if we had better rail systems here. But just the, for example, like in, in Dublin or Amsterdam, they have those, the, the systems right that are built right into the road. They run up the middle of the road. I think we do them down in Phoenix now too. But those, those light metros that can just run right up the center and allow people to get to where they need to be. And that seems something that could be potentially feasible for our town at least. Something that people can hop on, hop off and run the main route. But yeah, that's, that's my thoughts on it.
Thank you, Commissioner Burton. Commissioner Best, go ahead.
Well, it's an interesting question. More years ago than I'm going to tell you, and I'm going to admit, I spent a couple of years in Ecuador. And the interesting thing there was that to have a car meant you were quite wealthy. And so unlike in our country, but there was a fairly robust public transportation system that would get you anywhere because most people simply had either that or their feet. And there was also a very, very strong sort of informal transportation system. So if you were a normal civilian, you could hop on a bus and get anywhere. If you needed to get your pigs to market, you would take a different kind of transportation with other people carrying their pigs and chickens to market, a little less formal. And it just worked very, very well. Everybody could get everywhere. Cars were just not an option unless you were wealthy. So that's a little bit different take on it. I don't know if this is the right place to ask this question. I've got a question about electric vehicles for some, some point in this discussion. So maybe I'll just stop now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Best. Okay, Mr. Wessel, why don't you go ahead and continue on?
Excellent, thank you, Madam Chair. So we are going live with our website. We have launched a survey or working through some technical difficulties. We'll hopefully finish launching that this afternoon or early tomorrow morning. But you can, you can see the homepage on the left. Then there are separate pages for a little more information on the document and the process itself. Access to documents as well as how to participate. Including, you can see, perhaps you can see the reference to the regional snapshots, you know, online surveys and other things. On that website, some of the documents, you'll be able to see our literary review that looks at these vehicle mile travel reduction and travel demand management strategies, performance measures. We have a socioeconomic profile and we have this results of our random sample survey that was just recently completed. As a summary graphic of, from a literary view, some of the things that we'll be looking at for this vehicle mile travel reduction. You can see on the far left, that's travel, excuse me, transit oriented development and density as well as price parking are some of the, the more important things we can do to help reduce VMT. There's a range of other strategies. These are all based on research. I find it interesting and helpful that many of you referenced Europe. You know, to be this aggressive or assertive towards climate action, there's not a lot of notable success in the United States. So looking a little more globally may be useful to, to find examples there. As far as the survey, here's just a sample. We asked people, you know, what was their, you know, to imagine a week's worth of travel? What was their primary mode of transportation? And that's the blue. And then we asked them 10 years from now, how would you like to travel? So we actually see a fairly important shift away from automobiles. Yeah, we recognize this is, you know, kind of aspirational, but it's still useful. And we'll look at, you know, how, how onward and upward and our analysis of that compares to this. Look at whether these shifts are large enough to achieve climate and other goals. But a lot of good information, interesting findings in that random sample survey. Some of the big issues that we're looking at, I've spent quite a bit of time referencing climate change. Forty percent greenhouse gas emissions come from transportation. That's why we're looking at it. But transportation also plays a role in another issue here, and that's housing affordability, where, you know, a recent, you know, a draft housing plan by the city shows that 45% of people are cost burdening, meaning more than 30%, but their income goes to housing. So transportation has the opportunity to maybe, you know, reduce transportation costs by providing, you know, as several you mentioned, maybe affordable transit that's more convenient. Maybe you don't have to have multiple cars. It might also support the development of lower cost housing, more multiple, multifamily housing, both rental and ownership opportunities. Another thing that is of concern and also a mandate that we look at is, is these equity issues. This is a very busy map. I don't intend for you to try to make sense of it, just to say that, you know, there are minority populations, poverty, areas of poverty, areas with higher concentrations of disability or elderly or people that lack access. We're kind of looking where these intersect and we're making sure that we are, you know, providing transportation equitably. We'll also be looking at access to things like pharmacies, groceries, parks and recreation to see if there's, you know, buy and access by different modes to see how people are able to move around and whether our plans are helping or how much they're helping. We always think our plans are helping. We, we hope we're right there. I know Commissioner Best raised a question. Here's my next question to you. What is the most important question we can ask for you through this process? I'm not going to try to answer them tonight, but by collecting these, hopefully we get a, a good sense on how to best serve you and your, your interests and needs. So Madam Chair, I'll turn it back to you to guide the discussion and see what questions we can work on.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Wessel and Commissioner Best. I see you unmuted.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last night I attended the Lone Tree Butler Discussion at City Council. There's proposed huge new intersection there, kind of on the scale of Fourth Street and 66. And it got me to thinking, what if in the next 20 years, what if 20 years from now, a gasoline engine in a car is pretty rare and strange? And most transportation is electric. How would that color how we look at what we're trying to do? We're taught, you know, the, the city in particular, county not so much, but the city has a climate action plan and a carbon plan, which drive a lot of decisions. What if we take most of the carbon element out of transportation? How, which seems pretty much like what's going to happen. We've got major car companies investing many, many billions of dollars into plants to build electric cars and batteries. So how would that color and change what we're planning for? Right now, we're thinking of automobiles being the bad guy on a lot of levels. If we take the carbon out of it, are they still the bad guy? I don't know. I, I really just started thinking about it yesterday. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. On that, that is a, that is a big, that's a big question, Commissioner Best. On with, that could even be broken down into, into various parts. On, so thank you for bringing that up. And Mr. Wessel, I'm sure you made note of that.
Yes, Madam Chair, any other questions?
Yes, Commissioner Burton would like, has got one. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to find out if, because I know this is for the greater Flagstaff area and the areas outside the city limits do not have public transportation. So we are completely reliant on a car. I just wanted to put out there to see if there's talk about incorporating more available transportation, more available public transportation for the communities right outside. I'm not talking, you know, 20 miles out. I'm talking like Kachina Village and, and, you know, Donnie Park area and the places that don't have the bus service, but have so many residents that live in them. If there's, if there's short-term, long-term plans to be able to make transit a little more accessible. Because I know that I get, I see comments all the time on our community forums that are saying, hey, I don't have a car, I need a ride. I live out in Kachina Village. So that's, that's just something that I would like to see more talk happen about as far as incorporating the, the greater area and not just the, the center metro area. Because it seems like we're kind of growing out, but the transportation isn't growing out with the community.
Mr. Wessel, is it possible for you to answer any part of that question now? Because Coconino County is a very, very large county. And I'm wondering, like, like Commissioner Burton, if there is something more comprehensive, countywide rather than just citywide?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Burton, briefly, to some degree, I'll, I'll defer to, defer and refer you to the Mountain Line Flagstaff in Motion Study where they're examining this. I think there's some, some great resources there. There are some services available that could be expanded, depend, you know, always funding dependent. But they do have a taxi voucher program. They do have a van pool program that could be made available. The latter, it always depends on are there enough people, you know, in one location heading to a very similar location that, that makes that van pooling possible? As far as more traditional service, you know, a fixed route, what's called a fixed route service, that continues to be a real challenge to fund or finance. But there may be solutions available. Federal, federal funding has just increased with the big infrastructure bill. Some of that, I believe, is geared towards rural transit. So there may be some new opportunities. There's also some creative solutions that might be applicable. Mountain Line is pilot testing what's called microtransit within that corridor between the Aquaplex on Fourth Street and Country Club and between the railroad tracks and the interstate. There's a lot of social services there, services like the Guidance Center. And that area is not currently served by fixed route transit. And so this is kind of an on-call transit service that will take people anywhere they want to go within that somewhat limited zone, but also get them to bus stops and the periphery of it so that they can then access transit to get elsewhere. And I think there's a few slightly wider zones where they'll make some pickup and drop off. And we have spoken, we, meaning Mountain Line and Metro Plan, spoken with some rural carriers that have aggregated, you know, hospitals, jail districts, others, people who have a variety of transportation needs and, and have been able to work collectively. Some kind of challenges with kind of the bureaucratic infrastructure, both the, kind of the state and the county with making it happen exactly like that. But there's some opportunities there. So we will be examining this a little more fully in, in the RTP, but we'll be drawing heavily on that Flagstaff in Motion Plan. Hope that at least partially answers your question.
Thank you, Mr. Wessel. Vice Chair Walters, I see your hand raised.
Dave, do you have any short-term solutions for the 180 quarter, the Humphreys 180 quarter?
I think the, I think the short answer to that is no. The, you know, Art Babbitt, former supervisor, you know, had his initiative a couple of years ago. And, you know, as a result of that, the partnership between Mountain Line and Snow Bowl has grown and that express service is expanding. I believe there's also some private shuttles from Phoenix. Hopefully they're providing some, some relief. And then, you know, ADOT, of course, just wrapped up their dual right from southbound Humphreys to westbound 66. So those are the things that are in play. I don't believe there are any other initiatives on the horizon to do more.
That's what I was afraid of. Thank you, Dave.
Could I chip in and ask your question there?
Of course.
Commissioner Best. Don, do you think that things have improved a great deal? My, my impression is that they did a pretty good job and things improved a lot, but I could be wrong.
Really?
I was on, I was on that committee for a couple of years and it seems like a lot of good stuff happened.
Well, I think as far as the impact from Snow Bowl and the discussions that I have every month with, with JR, that seems to have improved. But what we're seeing, and we'll see it tonight as well, we have more people moving out onto that corridor. So we're, we're, we're getting people that are coming in and out of there, a lot more traffic on a daily basis, year round than, than what we've been experiencing. And, and I think we have to come up with some sort of solution for that. And, and I, I, I don't see any way except to go over to I-40 somehow and, and connect over to I-40 to take some of that load off with a bypass. But that's why I was asking if anything's been really addressed on that or, or discussed. Because that's, that's going to be. Because that's, that's going to be a huge problem.
Well, I know on the committee, there were, there were a couple of routes discussed. Were you there as well? I can't remember.
No, sir, I was not.
Okay, there were a couple of routes discussed. Connecting Snowball Road and Bader Road got a lot of, to Route 40 at, at the, is it the, what's the overpass there? Is that Wing Mountain or?
It's A1.
A1, yeah. And there are a lot of routes discussed, but the costs, of course, were crazy. Are, are you referring more to out-of-town traffic or commuter traffic?
No, I think commuter traffic, you know, much the way that we do with, with east to west traffic. Everybody jumps on I-40 to come around. I think we would, we'd end up with some sort of a situation like that if we had a bypass going to A1 Mountain. You know, it's, it's, it's a big deal. But I think at, at this point, we have to look at 20 years ahead and we have to have solutions for those kind of problems.
Interesting. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Wesel, that's all the comment, unmutes and hands raised that I see. So go ahead and continue your presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Commissioners, for your contribution to this kind of questions that we'll investigate. That was useful. Just a last slide here, really, what's coming up. So we run a regional transportation model. And from that model, we'll draw a number of performance measures as well as some, from some other sources. We hope to have that report later in February. And then, you know, a report if we, if things are going well for both, a comparative report for the onward, which is the business as usual, if you will, a scenario in, in March. And we'll be sending out to stakeholders and others, you know, notices when, when those reports become available and would be available to make updates. So similarly for the onward, we should, in February, have our land use employment projections. I want to recognize Melissa Shaw and Bob Short and their, their help in putting those together for the county areas within the region. As I mentioned, we have the web launch and online survey being launched. Hopefully, we'll get that either worked out tonight or early tomorrow morning. And then a stakeholder outreach is ongoing. And in addition to you, we've met with an engineering firm, school district. We'll be meeting with the Chamber Business Advocacy Committee, the County Hispanic Advisory Council, hopefully the other councils there as well. And we'll just kind of keep this snowballing as, as best we can. We also have a social media campaign. So if any or all of you receive the, an email from us over the next couple of days, we ask you to follow us on social media, take our online survey and support the effort. So with that, I thank you for your time. This has been very helpful and appreciated.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wesel, for your presentation. Very much appreciated and very informative. Thank you.
Yes, you all have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Yes, Mr. Short, the final item on the study session is the Commission and Staff Roundtable. On if you would like to, is there anyone who, any commissioners who have or staff on, that have anything they would like to discuss at that, at this point? Okay, Mr. Short, I am not seeing anyone. It is, my clock shows 5:12. It looks like we've got time for about a 10, 15-minute break. So why don't we, why don't we do that? And then the meeting will start promptly at 5:30.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, see you guys all in a few.
Is Lottie there? Has she got?
Mr. Short, are you there?
Yes, I am here, Madam Chair.
Okay, all right. I am showing that the clock has hit 5:30, so I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. I'm going to start with the meeting rules and procedures. Welcome to the January 26, 2022, meeting of the Coconino County Planning and Zoning Commission. Cases will be heard in the order they appear on the agenda. Following the staff presentation, the applicant and/or the applicant's representative may address the commission. As an applicant, if you agree with the staff report and have no additional information.
You, I'll see you tomorrow.
Excuse me, I'm going to, I'm going to take a, I'm going to interrupt myself here. And I'm going to ask that everybody that is on the meeting tonight to please turn off your camera and mute. Okay, I'm going to continue on. As an applicant, if you agree with the staff report and have no additional information, please feel free to keep your comments brief. Any relevant comments are welcome. Following the applicant's presentation, I will make a call to the public. If you wish to address this case, please state your name and address. We ask that your comments be limited to three minutes or less. Comments must be relevant to the case. Please address all comments to the commission. No matter how strongly you may feel about the case, all comments must be polite and courteous. After all interested public have spoken, the public comment portion will be closed. Discussion will then take place amongst commissioners. Decisions of this commission regarding any zone change or preliminary subdivision plot approval are referred to the Board of Supervisors as a recommendation. All other case decisions are binding unless appealed to the Board of Supervisors. If you disagree with the commission's decision, you have 15 days to appeal. Please contact staff at the Community Development Office for appeal procedures. Due to the virtual nature of this meeting, I will be doing a roll call, vote of the commissioners to ensure accuracy for the record. Please mute your speakers and turn off your cameras. And thank you for joining us this evening and actively participating in our county planning. Mr. Short, the first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would lead us in that, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the December 1st, 2021 minutes. And I actually have something that I would like a correction, that I would like added. It's on page two. It is regarding case number CUP 21-070. And this was the Met Tower case that we heard on December 1st. I would like included in there my comments that I made to the applicant that my approval of the Met Towers was not to be misconstrued as tacit approval for a wind energy project. Ms. Hernandez, I believe that that is what I said, but I do want the record to be accurate. So if you want to go back and listen to the recording and actually quote me, that would also be, that would also be acceptable. On, do any of the other commissioners have any, anything to add to the minutes before we head to a motion? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So can I please have a motion in a second for the approval of the December 1st, 2021 minutes?
I make a motion of approval for the minutes for the last meeting on December 1st, 2021.
I will second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Walters and a second by Commissioner Ruggles for the approval of the December 1st, 2021 minutes. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Clifford?
Abstain.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
This is Chair Antiveris, and I also vote aye. The motion passes for the approval of the December 1st, 2021 minutes. The first item on the public hearing agenda is Resolution Number 2022-001.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This item is a, an amendment to, is an amendment to the operating rules and regulations of the commission. And it is basically to support using web-based technologies. So for that purpose, we have two different changes to the, to the rules. I will drag down, if you can see my screen. I'll show you the first one. This would be the first change here outlined in, in yellow, highlighted in yellow. It says, "and/or or through web-based technologies." So that just adds another way that meetings can be held by the commission.
Okay, Mr. Short, what is the, there you go.
And the second one, and thank you for finding this one, putting another one to us, Madam Chair, is to remove a C here where it says telephonic or other technology attendance appearance is not permitted with exception of applicants and their representatives with a demonstrated hardship as coordinated advance with staff. So I think in the future, we will likely move, move into hybrid meetings so that we will be able to support that for applicants or others who would like to attend the meeting. The county is a very large county and people sometimes want to attend from long distances away or even out of state. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Short. Do the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Short on those changes or modifications that are being made to the bylaws? Okay, seeing none. Let's go ahead and have a motion in a second to approve this resolution.
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2022-001.
I will second that motion.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Walters and a second by Commissioner Ruggles for approval of Resolution Number 2022-001. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
And this is Chair Antiveris. I also vote aye. The motion passes unanimously. The next case is case number SUV 21-030.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Give me one second to get my full screen up. This case is the Tall Tales Ranch Subdivision amended condition. That's SUV 2130. In this case, the property owner is 7486 Star House LLC in Flagstaff. The applicant is Mike Palmer, Flagstaff. The representative is Ian Braun, CDE of Flagstaff. However, I have been working with the attorney on this case and she'll be representing the applicant tonight. Her name is Lindsay Shubi, and she's from Damage and Burnham of Phoenix, Arizona. Zoning of the subject properties, they are five. And the size of this parcel is at 111.02 acres. The, the request is to amend Condition 6 to re, to remove the requirement to be annexed into the Summit Fire District prior to final plat. This is a vicinity map showing the subject property. It is on Interstate or right near Interstate 40. This is Casanova Road going through. This is Casanova Esquestrian Estates. And this is the road out to Walnut Canyon National Monument. To give you an idea where this is. And this is an aerial photo showing the subject property. You can see it's surrounded by Coconino National Forest on both sides. And this is the background on this case. It was approved by the Board of Supervisors or this subdivision preliminary plat was approved by the Board of Supervisors on August 11, 2020 with that requirement to annex into the Summit, into the Summit Fire District prior to final plat. The applicant has been working in Summit Fire District, but it's been kind of difficult to understand exactly the annexation process. And they have had not, had not had good progress moving forward with annexing. And as we look back at this, it is unclear if annexation is possible because the subdivision is not contiguous with the fire district. And I want to show you a map of that to kind of give you an idea of what we're looking at. And I admit, as staff, this is not something that staff has dealt with before, but it is a difficult process to annex into a subdivision. I have provided you with the statute for that in your packet. And it's several pages long and it, it is a multi-year process to be able to annex. So in this case, you can see the boundary of the Summit Fire District right here. And you can see the subject property over here. So according to that statute, and I'm sorry, I apologize, I don't have that number in front of me. It indicates that a property must be contiguous with the fire district. However, it does say that nationally or federal-owned land and state-owned land does not stop the definition for being contiguous. In other words, you can go across those types of lands without, with, obviously, you're not going to, you could annex them to the fire district, but it doesn't have a huge impact on that. So in this case, we have Coconino National Forest and the highway. State 40, which is state right of way between the two. The other thing is the railroad, and this is private land. So it's not clear that Summit Fire District can jump over that private land and annex this, the subject property. And that's only sort of a layman, in layman's terms, how this would work. I think the bottom line is we don't really know if it could annex into Summit Fire District based on these issues. So based on that, this is the modification that staff is proposing. I've worked with the applicant's attorney on this and it, it seems to make sense. And it seems to work. So first of all, you would remove the section that says that the subdivision shall annex into Summit Fire District. And I'll read the section that would be added. It indicates property owners shall obtain and maintain fire service from the Summit Fire District or other approved fire service provider or as otherwise approved by the Community Development Director. Developers shall prepare and record covenants, conditions, and restrictions, CCNRs, which shall require that property owners obtain and maintain fire service. So it's really important that they not only obtain it, but they maintain it, that they don't drop it over a while. A copy of the CCNR shall be submitted to the Community Development Department prior to approval of final plat. CCNR shall be recorded within 30 days of final plat approval prior to issuance of vertical building permits. And then that last part would just stay the same. But it's also important that they would have those CCNRs in place. And then that last part would just stay the same, but it's also important that they would have those C C N Rs in place prior to issuance of building permits, basically for houses. And in terms of public participation, neighbors within 1,000 feet of subject property were notified of the amendment. Staff has not received any comments on this, on this proposal. These are the findings from preliminary plat. This is basically an amendment to a preliminary plat. Staff has addressed these in the staff report. And with that, staff recommends the Commission provides a recommendation that the Board of Supervisors approve S U B 2130 with the recommended amendments to Condition 6. With that, I'll take any questions from the Commission.
Okay, Commissioner Best, I see you unmuted.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So in the proposed change, when we say or other fire service provider, do we mean other, other approved fire service provider, do we mean EMS rolled into that? And should we say that?
We could be that specific, but.
I mean, to me, I, I, I don't know. Honestly, is, does it just automatically come with fire service or is EMS? Should we make sure that we roll that in there?
I think that's, that's something that we certainly could do. Honestly, I don't believe it actually had that in the original condition. But typically, they do come together. And I'll just say the reason for this condition for property, for the other fire service providers, if you look in the case that we had last month, I believe, or maybe a couple of months ago, I can't remember what exactly when, for Flagstaff Ranch, they actually had their own fire district. They created their fire district at Flagstaff Ranch. And then they contracted with another fire district, in that case, Hollins Fire District for services. So in this case, it might be the same thing. If they decided to create their own fire district, then they could contract with Summit Fire District for services. But if, if you would like to add E M, Emergency Medical Technician Services, E M T Services, we can certainly do that.
Well, one of our, one of our conditions does say public health. And so I think, I, I think I would wrap that in there. It's an expensive service. We wouldn't want someone to be able to just do fire service and not do EMS, which would of course be crazy, but who knows what people would do to save some money. I mean, we're kind of in uncharted territory in my experience here. Another, let's see. Another question is who is responsible for analysis of the subdivision to make sure that things like thinning and ingress and egress and fire rules during fire season? Who's, who's going to put together that plan?
So if you look at the, the last one down here, it says written approval of any fire protection facilities shall be obtained from the fire chief and provide community development service prior to final plat. We have that, but we also have within the subdivision conditions, there is actually within their, within their C C N Rs, they are required to have a firewise plan and that is addressed within their C C N Rs from the original subdivision. That wasn't really part of this so much, but it would, but that was required with that, with that subdivision.
Well, would somebody go in before the lots are sold and make sure that thinning is done adequately?
I believe in this case, and we can, we can pull up that, that, that again, but I believe in this case, I don't know if you've been in that, this area. The trees are very, it's very sparsely forested. There's a mix of different forests out there. A lot of it is just totally, let's go back and look at the, the area photo and we can see that maybe a little better.
Commissioner Best, I'd like to interject here. I've been on the property and it meets the Wui Thinning Wildlife Urban Interface. It's very thin out there.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Best.
On, Mr. Short, could you, if we're going to modify the condition, the proposed condition that's in the staff report, could you pull, yeah, pull the condition back up? Can you please put the verbiage in there at the appropriate spot so all of the commissioners can look at it and know exactly what we are approving, please?
I'd like to give input here. In my experience with Foxborough, the fire and EMS are separate. EMS is provided as, as a, as a standard within five miles. So I'm not sure. I'd like to get our attorney to answer that.
And Chair, if I may, this is Lindsay Shubi. When you're ready for the applicant, I, I'm happy to address that too because I've got some concerns about adding that.
Okay, okay, thank you. Let me, let's get, let's get back in order here. Are there any other questions from the commissioners for Mr. Short at this time? Okay, not seeing any. Would the applicant or the applicant's representative like to address the case? And please state, Ms. Shubi, would you please state your name and address for the record? And thank you for addressing that question that's come up. So please proceed.
Chair, thank you so much. For your record, my name is Lindsay Shubi. I am with the law firm of Gammage and Burnham, 40 North Central in Phoenix, Arizona, 85004. And I hadn't been in front of you in a while and now I've had the opportunity twice in a short time. So pleasure to be in front of you again this evening. Bob did such a fabulous job on the presentation. I don't, I, I don't think we need to address it too much. We did, my client agreed to, to the initial stipulation to annex into the summer fire district, Summit Fire District. And unfortunately, it's just, it's very difficult. So what I, I think where we landed here and went through the attorney's office took care of the need, right, which is to maintain, obtain and maintain fires, fire service, as well as when it's part of the covenant conditions and restrictions, the C C N Rs, that is a great protection mechanism, not only for the county, but for neighboring property owners, right? As we know, those C C N Rs are contractual relationship between neighbors. So it will, you know, ensure that all the neighbors have fire service. As far as the EMS service, you know, a lot of times they are separate. I think when you're talking about fire, we're talking about a life safety issue that has an impact on your neighboring property owners and on the community as a whole. I would choose, I would request that we leave EMS out of it and leave that up to private property owners and to their, their, the service that they provide or that they choose to get. I, I, I always struggle with overly regulated stipulations and in terms of, of enforcing those. So I think the fire protection, I think we meet the needs of the county and the neighboring property owners. I hate to take it a step further with EMS because of the, the community protection of, of the life safety of other people, the surrounding property owners. So I respectfully request Chairman and, and members of the Commission that we omit the EMS, but leave the stipulation as proposed. And that's all. I respectfully stand for questions, but Bob did such a good job explaining the conundrum in terms of the annexation, but I think we're protected here.
Madam Chair, is it okay if I speak?
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm trying to remember to mute and unmute. So please, Commissioner Best, go ahead.
Thank you, ma'am. One of our conditions says "Design of the proposed subdivision..." dot, dot, dot "will not present serious public health problems." In order to support this, I would have to know that if somebody dialed 911, someone would show up. So I guess it wouldn't have to be prepaid as it might be in a fire district. But if somebody has a heart attack out there and dials 911, who shows up? Unless they are part of a fire, unless they have an arrangement.
Commissioner Best, these, these are questions. This is uncharted territory for me. We, we have never in years, I've been on this commission ever discussed this. And so I would like to ask our legal counsel to please weigh in on this conversation and give the Commission direction here, please.
Commissioner Aaron Lumpkin here, County Attorney's Office. I don't have a clear answer for you. I haven't come across this question myself either. My initial impression would be, for one, I, I can, this can always be a question I do some research on, get back to the Commission later date, but I don't think I'd be able to sufficiently cover those grounds tonight. As far as providing conditional, conditions within the conditional use permit, there's a lot of latitude for the Commission to do as it feels fit. The policy standpoint, see by applicant's attorney, make a lot of points, make a lot of sense to me. But as it pertains to what is and is not allowed by the law here, I don't have a straight answer for you.
Madam Chair, can I interject?
Okay, yes. Yes, Mr. Short, if you, if you have some direction, it would be greatly appreciated.
So we often do, you know, require EMS or emergency medical services with these types of things. My understanding of this, and I, in this case, is that there is Guardian ambulance service and that would be located in East Flagstaff. And that, my answer is that would be the responder to such an event. I don't think you're required to have a contract with them. But that's certainly a good question. That is kind of beyond the scope of this request in some sense because now we're adding things that weren't in the original subdivision. But that would be, my understanding is that they could, they, they could, they dial 911 and this is not, I mean, in some cases, we are very concerned about how close they are to, to emergency medical services. In this case, being close to the city of Flag, then there would be someone that would respond. That would be my thought on this. I also understand that Summit Fire District has, does have EMS services. So there are fire stations within about three miles of here.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Short. And I, I don't want to assume here, so I'm going to ask the question. If someone dials 911 from this subdivision, someone's going to pick up the phone. Right?
I would hope so, yes.
Madam Chair, Lindsay Shubi again with Gammage and Burnham. Yes, that, that, there, there are, you know, and I know down here in the valley, there are relationships between all of the different cities and districts and fire districts. And, and yes, EMS, you know, if you call Phoenix, but you're, you're in the Phoenix jurisdiction, but you're closer to Glendale. Glendale will show up. There are common call centers as well as work that I do in Maricopa County. I agree with Mr. Short that we're close enough to the city here that I don't think, to Flagstaff proper, that I don't think that would be a problem in terms of getting service out here.
Okay, Commissioner Clifford, I see your hand raised.
Yes, Madam Chair, it is now Summit Fire and Medical Service. They have EMS at all of, all of their stations now.
Okay, okay. I, I think with that information, I think that that clears it up, that if somebody does dial 911, there will be a response in a timely manner. Thank you. Okay, I think that we are, Commissioner Best, I am now satisfied that the public health and safety issue, if somebody called 911, I am personally satisfied that there is going to be assistance rendered. So I am, I am ready to move forward with, with this case. Do you have any lingering concerns that you would like to bring up at this time?
I, I'm not quite sure. I sure would like to know absolutely positively. I, I'm, I'm sure, I guess Guardian would respond. That's a pretty long way. How long is it from the top of McMillan Mesa to this property?
Commissioner Best, actually, the Summit Fire District, fire station's right on Towns and Winoma, Winona and Casanova Road.
So, so what you're saying is that they, that, that the service that they are required to obtain would be cover both? If that's the case, then I, then I'm fine.
Well, that service is there. It is available. I don't honestly know who pay. And i- if you're part of a fire district, then you don't get charged when they come put out a fire, as far as I know, right? If, but ambulance rides, I, I think there, I mean, it could be, could be partly, it could deal with your medical insurance and many other things. So that's a different, that's a different issue.
Well, I, I don't care about the cost. I just want to know that somebody will respond in a timely manner.
This is Vice Chair Walters. And, and, and again, you're talking about two different things. Property of subscription and life safety, emergency medical services is, is covered by the district. And, and that's why I asked for our attorney to verify that, but I, I would expect us to move forward on this without adding EMS in here because I do understand that that is covered based on my past experiences of doing developments.
It's covered, it's covered by Summit?
It, it, it's covered by the, the Summit Fire and Medical Services. And it's, it's a, a service is provided without subscription.
Okay, so they would just provide the service and bill for services rendered?
I don't, I don't even know that they bill for the services. On a fire, they will because that's property. That's a different deal. That's a subscription thing. But I, I'm in their, in their area and, and I have to sign up with them for fire protection, but that doesn't include EMS.
But they will respond anyway.
They do, they do and have responded for EMS.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, this is Jay. If I may add, so there's home, there are homes out there now that are not within a subscription. And EMS and emergency services regarding fire, they will respond. It's just if you're not subscription-based in their district, they just bill you. So I've had conversations with chiefs before about this. So, so somebody will show up. It's just, you, you may get a hefty bill.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chris. Okay, with that, I think that we are now ready to move to a motion in a second on this case. And this will actually be a motion for a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, so. So I'll go ahead and accept that motion from one of our.
Take a motion for approval of S U B-21-030 as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, we, I have a motion by Commissioner Walters and a second by Commissioner Williams to recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors on S U B 21-030. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
This is Chair Antiveris. I also vote aye. The recommendation to the Board of Supervisors has passed unanimously. The next item on the agenda tonight is Case Number D R O 21-014. Mr. Short, before you begin your presentation tonight, I would like to talk to the commissioners and to anyone who is joining us in the public that wishes to address this case tonight. On page, I would like to direct the commissioners to page three of the staff report where it says background. And I'm going to read the first two sentences. It says, "This background information is provided primarily to inform." to inform the commission about future requirements that may affect the design of the site. Issues related to annexation, transportation, wastewater, and other issues not related to the design of the site and the design guidelines of the Fort Valley slash Highway one eighty corridor, corridor area plan may not be considered by the commission in the review of this application. Therefore, comments not related to design should not be included in the record." So Commissioners, we cannot discuss anything outside of design review as we consider this case. And for the, uh, for members of the public that have joined us tonight, the only, the only issues on, that you will be allowed to speak to are design review. Anything else regarding the other things that I talked about, such as transportation, wastewater, annexa- annexation, those will not be appropriate. And, um, I will have no choice but to immediately, um, cut you off if anyone goes down that road. And if I do have to cut anyone off tonight, that will be the only time that you get to speak. There, there, there will be no coming back. So I just want to be sure that everyone understands, um, this as we move forward. With that, Mr. Short, would you please present this case?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. This case is the Aston Village D R O. Uh, in this case, the property owner is Quintana Investors LLC of Flagstaff, Arizona. The applicant is Christina Laguna, Christine Laguna of Civil Design and Engineering of Flagstaff, Arizona, and the developer is Danny Watson, the Watson Commercial Contracting. Location of the property is on North Fort Valley Road, also known as Highway one eighty and north of Quintana Drive in Flagstaff. The zoning of the property is C G ten thousand. That's commercial general ten thousand square foot minimum parcel size. And the size of the parcel, the parcels, actually, there are three total parcels and they total four point five two acres. The request is the design review for a development with thirty one cabins and a general store. Uh, the proposal also includes a wildflower meadow, a putting green with artificial turf, a stream, patios, and a dog park. This is some background on the property and on this case. This property was de- was dedicated as tract A on the Locket Ranches flat, but was not part of Locket Ranches. So you can find it on that flat, but it actually was not part of that. That was an, uh, unsubdivided land subdivision, uh, consisting of large, very large plots up to forty acres that were later subdivided to create the development we have now, along with, uh, some other subdivisions that developed in the area. Uh, the proposed uses, excuse me, the proposed uses hotel, motel, resort, and retail store. That's how they're defined in our zoning ordinance are permitted by right in the commercial zone. Uh, so this, that means that this project may be approved with a building permit once the D R O is approved. And that building permit will address issues such as traffic and wastewater. I also wanted to mention that there has been some discussion about this property and its relationship to City of Flagstaff. It is right on the border of City of Flagstaff. However, as we talked to Flagstaff, City of Flagstaff staff, we have heard from them that they did not have enough boundary along the city. This lot doesn't, this parcel doesn't to be annexed. And that's why it hasn't been annexed at this point. And I have a vicinity map up here to show you that. You can see the white boundary around, actually, City of Flagstaff is on this side. This is outside of the City of Flagstaff. This constitutes a peninsula that moves out of, this is the Locket Ranches area, out of Locket Ranches area, past the subject properties and into this area here. So Highway one eighty goes up through here. It passes by the subject properties and some other prop, one other property, and then it goes back into the city as it moves forward. And this is an aerial photo showing the, uh, subject properties. Again, you can see the City of Flagstaff boundary along here. Uh, this is, this is actually our community development offices where my offices and other offices are. Uh, this is other county land, uh, zoned R M ten A. This is the Flagstaff, uh, fire state, I'm sorry, this is the Flagstaff Fire Station. And this is Grand Canyon Trust. So there is, there are other properties in here. These properties, this property is owned by City of Flagstaff. This is a picture of a subject property looking north from Quintana Drive. And this is a, a, the site plan for the project. As you can see, this is Quintana Drive here. This is Highway one eighty going north. And, uh, this is the entrance. The applicant has proposed that this area be paved and this area not be paved. And that is something that is mentioned in the, uh, Fort Valley Area Plan Design Guidelines. All those staff, because of its location closer to Flagstaff staff is recommending that all of it be paved in this case. The, the fire, the, there will be required a T I A for this property. Excuse me. And, um, that could require some improvements to Quintana Drive. It could also require that, uh, additional access be made right here in this area. And this is that City of Flagstaff Fire Department Fire Station. This is the corner of Quintana Drive and Highway one eighty. And this is a landscape. A little cough going here. This is the landscape plan for the project. It, uh, it does not specify what kind of plants would be used, but it does appear to have adequate landscaping. And that will be, this will be checked again, reviewed again to make sure it's consistent with, uh, the requirements of the zoning ordinance. And this shows you a lot of the existing landscaping, uh, along this edge of the property over here. So there are quite a few ponderosa pine trees that can be used. Uh, they can get credit for that with, in their landscape planning. Uh, in terms of outdoor lighting, uh, they provide a photometric plan that shows two types of lighting. Uh, all lighting is proposed to be fully shielded and narrow spectrum amber LED lighting. And, uh, staff will propose a change to condition five to support this amber LED lighting. It wasn't clear that they were proposing that before, but as I looked closer today, it appears that's what they're proposing and we would like to support that. And this is that photometric plan. These are the two types of lighting they're proposing in the chart. And this is how the lighting fixtures look. This is, uh, elevations of the cabins they're proposing from all sides. You can see a brown metal roof. Actually, it's called bronze. And then this type of siding here, I'll show you a close up of that in a minute. And this is, uh, elevations of the general store. It has basically the same design. This is a little bit of a modern design, uh, but probably something that can be approved as part of the design guidelines. This is the siding that is proposed. It kind of, it actually looks a lot like some bark on, on some of the ponderosa trees in some areas. This is a split rail fence. This is also cited in the Fort Valley Area Plan Design Guidelines. Uh, so they have taken this straight out of those design guidelines that's proposed along the frontage of the roadways. And this is a wrought iron fence they would use around their dog park. That's on the southwest corner of the parcel. And this is their proposed sign. It is a dark bronze color, which appears to be a dark brown. And this is a rendering showing how the property would look as you move down the highway. So you can see the cabins and the general store as you move down the highway. In terms of, uh, public comments, the site was posted. Neighbors with one, one thousand feet were provided notice of the hearing. Uh, staff received a lot of phone calls and a lot of emails inquiring about the case, but I only identified two that were, uh, primarily about the design guidelines. I think some did mention lighting. I did not include those because they mentioned a lot of things that weren't relevant to this case. Uh, I'm trying, I summarized basically what these two comments said. One of them was indicated there's no design for, provided for the fence adjacent to the residentially zone property to the west. And that is correct. That is something that staff can approve as a, a part of a D R O. And another one was that payment should be required instead of gravel. Staff is conditioning that or has recommended that condition. And another one, this is, uh, this is, uh, summarizing another comment, and you did receive those. So you should have been able to see what they said. There is a lot more detail, but basically it said that the architectural style, color, and landscaping is not compatible with the rural natural landscape of the planning area. So this is a synopsis of the conditions of approval. Um, all parking and circulation areas shall be paved. All outdoor lighting shall be amber LED lighting as proposed by the applicant. Uh, a landscape plan meeting all requirements of section four point four in the design guidelines shall be approved by staff. So they'll be required to submit landscaping plan that has native landscaping as they indicate on the conceptual landscape plan and also meets these requirements, both the zoning ordinance and the design guidelines. This is something that staff adding.
Yes, Mr. Short, I, I hate to interrupt you. This is Chair Aunt Taveris. On the chat section of this forum is strictly to, if somebody is having a technical issue, it is not to discuss this case. And so, um, I'm just going to say that, um, there is a comment in here and no more going forward. If you have a technical issue, please use the chat function. Otherwise, it is off limits. And thank you guys so much for understanding. Uh, Mr. Short, please continue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is something that wasn't included in the original plans. It is this, uh, this fourth condition I'm showing here. Uh, it is a requirement of the zoning ordinance and, and it requires a six foot high masonry or solid fence of wood or other material meeting the design guidelines in a ten foot landscape strip shall be installed along the east boundary of the subject property adjacent to the A R one zone. So this is kind of a buffering effect, uh, between this project and any kind of residential zoning. Uh, so the way we looked at it, there'd be some kind of fence and then there'd be some, be landscaping. And then also a three foot berm, this is also from the zoning ordinance, uh, shall be installed behind and integrated into the landscape strip along the frontage of the subject properties on North Fort Valley Road and on Quintana Drive. And then finally, uh, three foot, three point three foot solid fence shall be installed as screening around the electrical telecommunications boxes on the corner of Quintana Drive and North Fort Valley Road. And, uh, the reason for that height is, uh, that is as high as you can get, something that's since fenced stalled along the frontage. And I felt that that needed to be screened here. I believe I have a picture of that coming up. Let's see. There we go. So that would be around these electrical boxes. And this shows the, the adjacent residential properties. So there would be a six foot fence installed along this. If the commission would like to, uh, provide more details about the fence uh, beyond what I have in the staff report as in the conditions, then you can certainly do that. And this, uh, this is a synopsis of D R O compliance. If you look at the, the design guidelines for the Fort Valley Area Plan, they are quite substantial. They're, they seem to be fair amount more detailed than some of the other area plans that we have. But this is a synopsis of, uh, those that are related to this particular case. If you look at the staff report, I cited almost every one of those because they almost all seem relevant in some, in some sense. So first of all, architectural styles compatible with the rural natural landscaping of the planning area or tone colors of the natural planning area. These are all things that should be used in the design. Roofing materials and colors that blend with the natural environment. Natural materials or high quality, natural appearing synthetic or manufactured materials should be used. And as you can see, the, the siding was a synthetic material, but it did appear to be, you know, a natural appearing, uh, material. Signs shall make the same requirements of design materials and colors as specified in the design guidelines for everything else. And, uh, preserve existing vegetation. There are, of course, a lot of ponderosas here, and they are very important if they be utilized in the landscaping. It just makes sense. And in order to, for the commission to approve a design review overlay, I know that the commission is, is used to in some sense, looking at findings and being able to make the findings. In this case, the commission simply has to determine the proposed development is consistent with the design guidelines of the Fort Valley Highway one eighty corridor plan design guidelines. They start on page seventy two of the, of the plan, uh, to approve the design review application. And I did want to make this one change. Uh, like I said earlier, uh, as I looked, as I, I looked more closely at the lighting plan, I did see that there were options in the cut sheets for the lights for amber LED. So I, in, instead of, I took out that, the sentence that indicated that the lighting should be twenty seven hundred K or less and just stuck with actually what the applicant had proposed, which is amber LED lighting. And with that, staff recommends the commission approve D R O twenty five zero one four with the conditions in the staff report. And with that, I'll take questions from the commission.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Short. Okay. Um, I'm going to go through here and look for all raised hands. Okay, Commissioner Ruggles?
Uh, on. Yes, yes, very briefly, uh, I, I do need to let everyone know that I, uh, talked with Mr. Short earlier today about the change in the lighting. Um, and, uh, we were definitely on the, uh, same page on that. The, uh, the one thing that I'm going to recommend as a change, uh, is the addition of one word or two words, uh, is that it shall be narrow spectrum amber, which is exactly what the applicant is proposing. I, uh, I checked with the, uh, checked the manufacturer's, uh, uh, data on the wall lighting, uh, after I spoke with Mr. Short this afternoon. And that is indeed narrow spectrum amber, uh, which the, uh, cut sheet data that was, uh, in the packet did not indicate. So I, I simply verified that what, uh, Mr. Short has said and wants to do with the, uh, the lighting is, uh, quite appropriate. And, uh, I don't want to see somebody change that in the future to just any old amber lighting, should they want to do that. So that, that's for the commission discussion and.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ruggles. On Vice Chair Walters, I have seen you unmuted.
That was an accident.
That was an accident.
Okay, I, I gotcha. Okay, Commissioner Best, I see your hand raised.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm looking at the map on page forty three of the. Of the documents here. I'm particularly interested in the berm. This is a gateway, a flagstaff gateway, which is recognized, I think, both in the regional plan and the comprehensive plan. Is areas that we want to make sure stay looking like flagstaff. And I think that berm can help a lot. But I'm a little unsure how to read this design. So if you could help me, is the zigzag fence. Outside of the berm or inside of the berm?
Commissioner Best, my understanding is, well, my, my intent was that the fence. To the zigzag fence and what is it also called split rail fence with the outside, with the outside the berm. That would be first. And then there would be landscaping behind that with the berm, ten feet of landscaping. With the berm that, that kind of raises up three feet and then there would be trees along the berm and your trees and landscaping along the berm. So it would kind of flow, there'd be the ten feet and then flow up into the berm and landscaping to be along that area both on and off the berm.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
That, that makes sense. Yeah, they're also called rattlesnake fence, I think.
Makes sense. That makes sense.
Probably, probably Don knows that. He knows the history best. Okay. Well, I think that berm is going to help a great deal if it is done right to. Screen this from the highway and actually to screen the highway from the cabin. So I think there's a, a, a double positive here. I'd like to work on the condition number eight that talks about the berm a little more as time goes on here. Make sure that it is as natural as possible and the trees on, are put on top of it and they're evergreen trees. So that over time, and I know the evergreens take forever with Pinion Jennifer, but. Over time, as you drive down the highway, you would see a fairly natural environment, environment with some cabins behind it. And I think that's also in the interest of the project because separating the cabins from a busy highways. Probably in the applicant's interest as well. So I will work on some language for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. On, are there any other commissioners that have questions for Mr. Short at this time? I am not seeing any hands raised or anyone. Yes, um, so I am now going to ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative would like to address the commission. On, please state your name and address for the record and I would also like to ask. If you have received and read the staff report and if you agree with the conditions. So.
This is Danny Watson and yes, I do agree with the conditions.
Okay, Mr. Watson, can you please state your address for the record?
My personal address?
Uh, whatever address that you would like to use to identify your, for the record tonight.
Sure, nineteen fifty five West Baseline Road, based Arizona eight five two oh two.
Okay, thank you. And do any of the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Watson? Okay, I am not seeing any. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and open it up to public comment. I'm going to reiterate on what I said at the beginning of this presentation. That all comments must be strictly, strictly on related to design review. Anything else, I will have no choice but to cut you off on, and we're going to limit comments to three minutes or less. Mr. Short, I would like to ask if you would please on do the timing of the three minutes. And if you would give me a heads up when there is one minute remaining, please. Okay?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, so with that, if there is anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on this case. Please raise your hand. Um, I do see in Mr. Brian Herzog with his hand raised. Mr. Herzog, would you like to address the commission? Uh, Mr. Herzog, if you, if you are trying to address the commission, please unmute so we can hear you.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, we sure can. Please go ahead and state your name and address for the record and then your comments, please.
Madam Chairman, this is Brian Herzog. My address is two nine one two North Creekside Drive. I am the president of the HOA for Coyote Springs. Uh, what I'd like to address is a landscape issue due regarding fencing. We're concerned about transient movement across the wilderness area of the museum and Coyote Springs. And I would like to see the entire property, at least the north. And I believe the east side, which is bordering the house in the back, I believe. With a high fence to keep people from wandering on to private property surrounds this property.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Herzog. Does that complete your comments?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. On, are there any, is there anyone else in the public who wishes to address the commission? Um, I do see a Starla David who is unmuted. Would you like to address the commission?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Starla David. My address is thirty five hundred North Lost Creek Trail. Flagstaff, Arizona, and I have three concerns that I'd like to place before the committee at this time. The first is as a gateway to flagstaff, the design of the units. The architectural design more closely really resembles many storage units. The unit density also supports that appearance of the storage unit design with thirty one units. So I respectfully request that the commission consider a reduction of the number of units. And that they also look for more earth tone naturally, those external colors. The siding does appear that it looks like wood, but it's quite light in, in color, a light gray. Or that's what it appears in the documents that I've seen. Also, I'm wondering about animals in the area. From the water features and detention in the basin pond, the wildflower meadow. I'm wondering how that could affect the design and the unit density also. We very commonly have bear, raccoon, porcupines, deer, elk in our areas. In Lockit Ranches and I'm wondering about the attraction to the wildlife without proper fencing that would keep them out.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. David. Does that conclude your comments?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I am scrolling through here looking to see. If there are any other hands raised or anyone is unmuted. And I am not seeing anyone. I'm going to take another look because I, I don't want to miss anyone either. Okay, I am not. I am not seeing anyone. Well, no, hold on. It looks like there is iPad five. Or iPad S?
Yes, we have a question.
Okay, yeah, could you please identify yourself? State your name and address for the record.
My name is Mike Mitchell. My address is thirty three oh five Granite Ridge.
In Lockit Ranches.
Flagstaff, Arizona. I'm, I'm where the house that borders the, the proposed subdivision. Or proposed project. We were wondering the facing of the cabins. They, I noticed on the design that they all have porches. Is, are the porches going to be facing the common area? Or are they going to be facing like towards our house? We have privacy.
Okay, can, please, please hold on one minute because I want to be sure that this is kept very orderly. I'm going to actually ask Mr. Short if you know if his question is something. That is related to design review because we have to keep, we have to keep it very close in those parameters.
Adam Chair, that is an interesting question. I'm not sure if it's related to design review. But we can certainly, we can certainly answer it for him. I mean, I, I'm not sure if it's enough off the topic. That we, we couldn't answer it.
Why don't we, okay, let me ask Director Christelman if he could address this. Do you know, Mr. Christelman, if, if that is off topic?
Uh, Madam Chair, I think we can answer the question like Bob said. Thank you for the question, by the way, but it's not, it's not to be considered for design review. The, design review specific to the, the aesthetics and landscaping and lighting. Site orientation is not part of the design review.
Okay, so on, based on legal counsel that I received. And maybe counsel should weigh in on this. Is this something that should be part of the record now? Or should it be kept off limits?
Aaron Lumpkin here with the county attorney's office. It would be my advice at this time that discussion about the orientation of the units. Be kept off the record as it doesn't pertain to the DRO. That, this could be a question that staff. Another time it's going to answer these individuals.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lumpkin. I appreciate that. On going back now on to the individual that was speaking. On the orientation of these is off limits. So please continue on with any other comments that you have.
Okay, we do want to say we agree with wanting to have a good sized fence between our property. And their property, like Mr. Herzog had said, that his comment. Because this was something of concern of ours.
Okay, thank you. And does that conclude your comments?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I see a, let's see. Um, let's see. Okay, you guys were iPad S. Um, I've already called on Starla David.
Yes, Madam Chair, I, I did have one other, one other question though. That's why I unmuted again.
Oh, okay, um, Ms. David, I'm sorry, but to keep in order, I can't go back. If I let, if I go back and let you speak again at public comment, I have to allow everybody to go back and speak at public comment. So I'm sorry, but at this time, no further, I can't accept any further comments from you. And, okay, I see a Kenton Harmon who has his hand raised.
Hello, Madam Chair. Thank you. My name is Kenton Harmon. I reside at three, three, five, five Granite Ridge. Which is the adjacent property to the Mitchells as well as the property in discussion. As I reviewed the design documents, I found several aspects to be incomplete. One of those aspects was already mentioned. In the, the comments from staff. The comment I made there was to the objection of no design for the fence barrier. And the adjacent residential property as well as the north side property as it leads into the property for Museum of Northern Arizona. Additionally, I object to the design as it does not include any mention of use of fire resistant materials. Any fire suppression systems, hydrants, minimum storage requirements or emergency vehicle access. As this is a high fire area, I, I felt that the plan was insufficient in that regard.
Mr. Harmon, Mr. Harmon, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you right there for just a moment. While I ask again, Mr. Short, if you, if, if these comments that you're making are relative to design review. Mr. Short, could you please weigh in?
Madam Chair, I, I believe in this case, those are things that are mentioned in. The design review, but I. Don't think that, that it's meant for the commission to look at that kind of detail. Cool detail that is something with. Having that kind of, you know, detail for fire resistance and the kind of materials that are used. The applicant may be able to speak to that, but it, it does seem a little beyond the, the scope of, of this particular hearing.
Okay, okay, thank you, Mr. Short. Um, Mr. Harmon, you heard Mr. Short's comments. We have to keep this conversation in the parameters of design review. Those were outside of it, beginning to go outside of it. So just please continue on with any further comments that you do have. But just stay away from anything that does not relate to design review, please.
That's the end of my comments.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Harmon. Okay, I'm going to. Ask one more time. I'm quickly going through this to be sure. Okay, hold on. We have a Les Butters that has unmuted.
Yes, this is Les Butters. I'm having some technical difficulties on this right here. Can you hear me, Madam Chair?
Um, yes, I can. We can hear you fine. So go ahead and state your address for the record and continue on.
Okay, well, I'm a resident of Lockit Ranches. My address is thirty five fifteen North Lost Creek Trail. And first of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to address the commission. I do agree with a number of the items that have already been discussed, but I also would like to mention that. It's my belief that many of the guests that will be traveling or. To and from the Grand Canyon will actually be into and wanting to go into here. And many of these guests, I think, will have oversized vehicles. And so with RVs or, or trucks pulling trailers, that kind of stuff, I'm just curious as to how the number of parking spots. Which will accommodate these larger extended vehicles and trailers will be accommodated along with how they're getting in. Off of Quintana right there without blocking traffic. So, and I'm just wondering how that's going to affect. The design, if you will, between the spaces between each one of those units.
Okay.
And I also.
Yeah, um, this is Chair Ontiveris. Traffic off of one eighty and onto Quintana cannot be considered. On as far as the parking on that. I believe that that is in the site plan and there is adequate parking on for this project. I think we again might be getting out of bounds for a DRO conversation. And so, Mr. Short, I'm going to go back to you and ask if this is something that fits or if this is out of bounds.
Madam Chair, I, I'm sorry, I, with the technical difficulties I, I'm having, I, I'm not able to really understand what you're saying on there very much. Just every third to fifth word. So.
Okay.
I, I'm more, I'm more concerned of the spacing between the units and how that design works with. How the traffic can be flowing. And I know you, we can't talk about traffic, but I'm talking about the design and the space between the units.
Okay, okay, okay. And I do understand that, Mr. Um, Mr. Butters. And I believe, Mr. Short, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that that is. Mr. Short, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that that is spelled out in the site plan. And has been found to be adequate.
That is correct, Madam Chair. The, the parking, it does meet the zoning ordinance requirements. Which is not really part of the design review or the space between the cabins as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, thank you, Mr. Butters. Okay, I'm going to go through here one more time and see if there is anyone either unmuted or has their hand raised. I am not seeing anyone. I'm going to do it one more time to be sure that I don't miss anyone. But I believe that we, I believe we have had all of the public comments. With that, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment section. And I'm going to open it up for commission discussion. Um, Commissioner Clifford, you are first up tonight.
Um, I have nothing to stand. I think it's going to be a good project.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Walters.
It, it looks like a good project. I understand some of the concerns that have been brought up, but I also understand our, the scope of our review. So, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Burton.
I don't have any further comments to make. I can make the findings.
Okay, Commissioner Williams.
Um, I think it looks pretty good overall, but my biggest concern is not so there's not going to be a fence on the north side of this. Is that correct? Only on the east side where the private property is. And if that's the case, um, it is really easy for people just to wander out into the woods. They have no idea where they are. Um, and I don't think that's very good. Um, and also it's a huge wildlife corridor basically through there. So without a fence all the way around on the east and the north side, you're just going to end up with wildlife walking right in to the cabins, to the water feature. It just seems like from a wildlife perspective and, um, a trespassing perspective, it needs to have a fence on the north side as well.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Williams. The scope, I believe Commissioner Walters, Vice Chair Walters really summed it up. When he said the scope of what this commission could look at. And wildlife is not one of the things that would, that this commission can review tonight. So I understand.
How about a fence regardless of wildlife? Uh, I would like to see a fence on the north side as well.
Um, okay, hold that thought, okay, because I, because I will pick that up. I'm going to go ahead and move to Commissioner Best next. Oh, Commissioner Williams, let me ask if that concludes your comments, though.
Yeah, I think everything else that, um, has been addressed, um, to my satisfaction.
Okay, okay. Uh, Commissioner Best.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of things. You know, overall, I'm a little disappointed in the design. It, it doesn't really fit very well. It looks like, I don't want to insult anybody, but it, it just doesn't quite look appropriate. I I, I'm not hearing much from other commissioners, but gosh, you sure could have made those cabins fit in more. Uh, fit in better. They, they look a little like storage sheds rather than cabins. And I'm disappointed in that and, and I honestly hope that the applicant will take another look around. Look, look at the house on the corner of, uh, just up the street that goes up into Coyote Springs. And take some elements from that and colors. But, uh, it doesn't sound like there's, uh, enthusiasm for changing that, the design among commissioners. Um, I, I do have a couple of issues. I would like to change number eight to read. This is condition eight. Hang on, excuse me, just a second here. On North Fort Valley Road in Quintana. With primarily evergreen trees planted on top of the berm. Period. The highway side of the berm shall be planted with native grasses and plants and shall not be covered with gravel. The applicant shall develop an invasive weed plan approved by staff. Uh, I used to work for the Museum of Northern Arizona. Uh, I pull weeds down there on the museum land. I know that their invasive weeds are an issue there. Given our concern in our, in our policy documents with the gateway to Flagstaff. I'm hoping that if we get a, a berm there with a zigzag fence and some thyme and some native grasses and shrubs, that over time, that will look fairly natural. And, uh, cover the cabins from the highway and cover the highway from the cabins. I'd like to propose a tenth condition. Uh, now, don't jump on me until I'm all the way through this. This is a sign condition. Uh, we have a fifteen element list that we have developed over time to help mitigate off-site impacts on natural areas. Uh, from projects such as this, RV centers and campgrounds. That's getting into something that is beyond the scope of what we can do here. But I think, uh, we can say signs to help mitigate off-site impacts may be approved by staff. And I hope that staff will sit down with the applicant and, uh, show them possible signs that might address some of the issues that we're, we're talking about here, but trying not to talk about because they're not really, uh, design issues. We can have some stat, some signs that, uh, uh, already ready to be approved by staff. And, uh, I think fencing should be part of landscaping. Is that not true? I would propose an eleventh condition. A fence shall be constructed on the north side of the property. I think there should be a fence between, all the way around between this and other properties. I don't know. That's pretty normal. Uh, it wouldn't have to be a solid fence, but, uh, is that a, could somebody tell me if that's appropriate?
I think it's
You want to add that to number seven? Seven is saying a six-foot-high masonry fence on the east side. Do you want to add the north side, north and east side?
Uh, that makes sense to me.
Wait, we don't have another one?
Okay. And, uh, do we want that fence to be wildlife friendly or not? I, I can tell you, uh, I pull weeds down in that gully. Uh, which is Schultz Creek. Uh, just fifty feet from this property. It is a wildlife quarter. There are always deer and elk tracks down there. So on the other hand, I'm not sure that we want wildlife in this property and I don't think it blocks. They, they tend to want to cross the highway to get down to uh, the really flag. So I don't know that we care if this is wildlife friendly. Probably, probably wildlife unfriendly is better.
I agree.
Okay.
So Bob, did you get all of the changes to number eight?
Yeah, Commissioner Best, I was actually going to ask you to look at that. Okay, uh, condition number eight with the modifications.
I'll, I'll read it again. I see you're right there. Uh, so after, uh,
Okay, go ahead.
It says, on North Fort Valley Road and Quintana Drive. With primarily evergreen trees. Planted on top of the berm.
Okay, got that.
The highway side of the berm.
Okay, hold on.
Shall be planted with native grasses. And plants. And shall not be covered with gravel. The applicant shall develop an invasive weed plan. Approved by staff. And did you get, uh, proposed number ten?
Let me see. Oh, I did not. No, I definitely did not get that.
Okay.
Okay.
Signs to help address, uh, I'm sorry. Signs to help mitigate off-site impacts. May be approved by staff.
Okay, Ki- um, Commissioner Best, I'm certainly not, um, uh, adverse to that, but I just want to be sure that that is related to DRO and if that proposed condition is appropriate. Can Mr. Short, Mr. Christelman and/or our counsel please weigh in on Commissioner Best's proposed condition number ten?
Madam Chair, I would, I would say that would not be related to the design guidelines specifically.
Okay, that's, that's what I was thinking. And that's how come I don't think, again, again, it's not that I'm arguing on with the point of it, Commissioner Best. It just falls out of the scope of the DRO. And I think we're headed for trouble if we, if we put that in. So I think that based on council and direction, we need to remove condition number ten.
Well, now, I haven't heard counsel weigh in on this. This, in, in my, in my view, this is a signs are part of the DRO. And all we're saying is that, uh, we're going to allow signs that help mitigate off-site impacts.
Okay, and, okay, fair enough. Could I please have legal counsel weigh in on this?
Aaron Lumpkin from the county attorney's office. Um, I, I tend to agree with, uh, Mr. Shorts. Maybe elements of the DRO that do pertain to onsite signage, um, might pertain to advertising or whatnot. But I believe that this does venture close to, um, I'll work around. It resembles, quite frankly, a, a condition that we might see in the CUP. And I believe it does stray a field from the intent of the, the design requirements within the area plan.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lumpkin. Okay, now that we have had legal counsel weigh in on this. Commission, uh, condition number ten cannot, your, your, your proposed condition number ten cannot be, um, included, Commissioner Best. I think it's a good idea. Please don't misunderstand, but it's outside of the scope of this as our legal counsel has now said. So we cannot include it.
And would the, let me ask you this, would the would the applicant be allowed to put up signs that said, for instance, uh, it's pri- private property on the other side of this fence? That sort of thing? Would he have to come back to us to put up a sign like that? Or is he pretty free to? Uh, you know, what, like you can buy signs that, uh, talk about um, leave no trace, that sort of thing. Is he?
Uh, Commissioner Best, there are, uh, certain kinds of signs that are allowed by our zoning ordinance. Uh, directional signs, uh, things like that. The, the, in this case, with a DRO, staff can approve signage. It does not have to come back to the commission. There are certain things that staff can approve signage, lighting, fencing. And sometimes colors. So we, we could have prove that. So that would be, I think, up to the applicant if he would like to request something like that.
Okay, well, as long as you can approve it and, you know, we don't tie up everybody, uh, coming back here. Uh, I'm fine with that.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Best. And what I wanted to do before we go forward, I want to be sure that I understand because I'm not as familiar with this, um, property as, um, clearly Commissioners Williams and Best are. So I want to be sure that I'm understanding commission, uh, excuse me, condition number seven, um, correctly. If six-foot-high masonry or solid fence of wood or other material meeting the design guidelines and a ten-foot landscape strip shall be installed along the east and north boundary line. So are we talking about? If, if I were just reading this, I, it sounds to me like we're putting that that ten-foot landscape strip in there as well.
Uh, Madam Chair, I, I did have a comment on this.
Okay.
So with the design guidelines, okay, so first of all, you have certain requirements that the applicant has to make based on the zoning ordinance. So that would include, uh, the, the three-foot berm and the six-foot fence along the east property line adjacent to the residential. So that was the, that's the original purpose of this, is the fact that it's along the, it's a property line between commercial development and it's buffering, basically, required in the code, requi- the zoning ordinance between the commercial property and the residential property to the east. To, to the north of here, there isn't, um, there isn't any residential property. It's actually commercial property. It's in the same zone as this. And as far as I know, the applicant wasn't proposing any fencing along there. So in terms of design, this seems like, and I, and I, I, I'd love to have the attorney weigh in on this. But it seems like an additional type of fencing that need, that is being required, that's not really part of the design guidelines.
Yes, and I agree. That was, yeah, that was my concern as well. Um, could I please have counsel weigh in on this, on the proposed, uh, verbiage to condition number seven?
Aaron Lumpkin, uh, Bob, if you wouldn't mind repeating the question. I was having some audio issues.
Uh, so when, when we look at condition number seven, this was added because the applicant had not proposed fencing, uh, as required in the zoning ordinance. Uh, as a buffer between the residential prop, between the commercial property and the residential property. Okay, so that's, that was the reason for this requirement along that property. It's, it's required by our zoning ordinance. There isn't a, there isn't fencing required between two commercial properties. And that would be along the north property line. So there, uh, this isn't related to the design of the prop, to the design proposed by the applicant. It is an extra fence that would be required uh, by the commission. I'm not sure if the commission has the authority to do that. In a, in a design guideline, in a, in a DRO case.
Yeah, in a DRO case, since our, our scope of review for the commission is constrained to the design requirements outlined in the area plan. And if this isn't, if this isn't a feature that is required by zoning ordinance. I don't see how legally the, the commission can require its implementation. It'd be, it'd be my opinion that it's outside the scope of the commission's power right now.
Okay, thank, thank you, thank you, Mr. Lumpkin. That, that's what I thought. But I wanted to be sure. So Mr. Mr. Short, would you please remove? The, 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 yes, thank you, from condition number seven to take it back to the original. Okay, and now on.
Can I ask a question? Um, yes, of course. This is Commissioner Williams. Is there any point moving forward where that fence could be addressed, or would it be? A situation where down the line. Ace or the museum would have to. You know, bring some action against this development for trespassing because it's gonna happen. So.
Okay, Commissioner Williams, I think we're, I think we're headed down a road we ought not to be headed down. Because this is, I, it's strictly design review. And legal counsel has said that we do not have. The authority for the scope of the discussion tonight. To require that fence. And we're gonna have to leave it there. What other parties do or do not in the future as far as any kind of litigation. That is something that is, is way out of the bounds of this commission discussion tonight. Um, Commissioner, I, excuse me, Mr. Short. Hello?
Yeah, this is Ray Plato. I live thirty-three.
Hold on. Ray, we are, there is no further public comment or discussion. So I'm sorry, we are currently at commission. We are at commission discussion. And to keep it in order, I cannot allow your comments at this time. Mr. Short, would you please now move to condition number five? On, because I just want to be sure. That we have the wording right as spoken about by Commissioner Ruggles. And I just, Commissioner Ruggles, would you please look at that? And make sure that that is properly stated.
Yes, that is exactly the way it should be stated for the purposes of this design review. And would it be appropriate for me to put my two cents worth in along with everybody else at this point?
Um, well, it would be your two cents.
Design review.
As long, excuse me, Mr. Watson. If that was you that commented, you're out of order. This is commission discussion. I am the one leading the communication, the conversation right now. So Commissioner Ruggles, if your two cents are related. To design review, then yes, please, please share.
Absolutely. I know the rules only too well, so.
I know, I know you do.
I do not have any problem with that. And they are strictly related to the design review. I do understand and agree with. Some of the discussion that I have heard about fencing. I also understand the ramifications of adding fencing to the north side. That was a concern of mine, but I am quite satisfied with where we are with that. After hearing from Mr. Short, you, and legal counsel. Commissioner Williams, of course, you know. Initially, I had to say, yes, I agree with this. One other thing. That I would like to mention that relates to a public comment, and this is strictly design stuff. And that is the color of the siding. Initially, a fairly light color for that was of some concern to me because. It does increase contrast with the background that you will see. However. That being said. I listened to Commissioner Best with great intensity. And I think that the berm, along with landscaping along the highway. Will mitigate that quite a bit. I don't think you're going to notice that very much once it is fully vegetated on the berm. And the buildings are not that tall. The roof will help mitigate some of that contrast with the color they've chosen. So. I'm going to leave it at that. Otherwise. I think this is a, a very good plan as Commissioner Walters has stated. And also. Let's see who else thought that it was quite good. I will agree with those comments. I think it's gonna work. I think that's about all I need to say about it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. This is Chair Aunt Taveris, and I'm gonna speak last tonight. On. Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles, for your comments right there because that really summed up. On what I was gonna say, and I'm not, I'm not gonna repeat it for the sake of time.
Thank you. Sorry, sorry I had to raise my hand and speak up to get your attention.
No, no, you're, no, you're fine. You're absolutely fine. And I think that we've worked through this well. I. I want the commissioners to know that we had, our, our scope for this evening's on discussion. Was very narrow. And I also want you to know that I understand the concerns. On that you had regarding some of the issues. I. I, I don't want you to think that I was being dismissive of your thoughts or your concerns. It's just as in the position of chair. I have a job to do and I had to do it and I had to keep it very, I had to keep the scope of the discussion very narrow. So I would just ask all of the commissioners to please understand that. With that, I think that this is a good project. I think that the conditions. Especially as have been modified, I think that they are appropriate. And I think with that, we are ready to move to a motion. And a second, please.
Okay, I hear nothing but silence. So I think I'll go ahead and proceed with this. I haven't lost the. Seem to have lost the paperwork with the. DRO number on it. Would someone mind refreshing my? Memory for the lost paperwork?
Yes, it is no worries. It is DRO twenty-one dash zero one four.
Okay, I make motion for approval of DRO twenty-one dash zero four with condition.
Zero one four.
I'm sorry, zero one four. With conditions as stated by staff after full discussion by the commission.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion for approval of DRO two-one dash zero one four by Commissioner Ruggles. And a second by Commissioner Clifford. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Uh, this is Chair Aunt Taveris, and I also vote aye. So DRO twenty-one dash zero one four is approved. The next item on the agenda is on CUP twenty-one dash zero seven seven. Uh, Mr. Mr. Short? Are you there? Mr. Short, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, we are ready for the present, we're ready for CUP twenty-one dash zero seven seven, please.
Thank you. There we go. Sorry for the delay. One second while I work this out. All right, there we go. Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the commission, this case is the Verde RV as a residence. The applicant, application in this case, the applicant is Sucha and Jazzwinder Verde of Bellevue, Washington. The location of the property is at two-two-two-nine Picacho Way in Grand Canyon Junction, also known as Valley. The zoning is agricultural residential one acre minimum parcel size. Uh, the parcel size in this case is one point zero five acres and the request is to use an RV as a permanent residence. This is an entity map showing the subject parcel. It is. Off of Highway one eighty, well within this, the valley area right here, as you can see. And this is an aerial photo showing the subject property. There's not a lot of development around here, but there is a developed property. Just two doors down right here, two properties down. And this is the proposal, occupancy is proposed for four months out of the year during the summer months. So primarily, the applicant wants to. Bring the RV up here during the summer months and stay for four months. However, they are not limited to those months. They can stay as long as they want. Once you get approved for an RV as a residence. You can, you can stay there as long as you would like. The applicant plans to use the existing systems on the RV for, you know, potable water, for wastewater. He plans to take the RV to a dump station and dump it whenever that is needed. This is a site plan showing the subject property. This is lot forty-nine right here, and it is, as you can see, it's a hundred and twenty feet from the center line of Picacho Way. It only requires to be twenty-five feet back from the front property line. This is a photo of the proposed RV to be used on the site. This is a photo of the site, and as you can see, there is a property nearby. That has been developed. In terms of citizen participation, property owners within five hundred feet of the subject property were notified and they were invited to a neighborhood meeting on October twenty-second. As far as the, the applicant is concerned, I believe that there weren't anyone that attended that meeting. However, he did get one comment from a neighbor. And once he described the project to the neighbor, they, they didn't have any objections. Since then, and there was one of these comments was attached to the staff report. We did receive another comment later that I provided to you yesterday. We received two comments from owners in the area. And they were opposed, opposed to the project basically because. They thought it would reduce the property values. And I wanted to show you where those properties were. It seems like everyone here is from the East Coast. The, the owners from Bellevue, Bellevue, Washington and. One property owner that was opposed to this, to this case was located right here. They are from Seattle and these three properties are owned from, by a family from Los Angeles. And I believe they may be here and. Can comment on that. But primarily, they were concerned that it would reduce their property values. These are the findings of fact for conditional use permit. They have been addressed in the staff report. And with that, staff recommends approval of CUP twenty-one zero seven seven with the recommended conditions. With that, I'll take any questions from the commission.
On Mr. Short, I am not seeing any. So I would like to ask you though, I did get. The email that you forwarded and it just said that we oppose. But I didn't see anything other than we oppose. I didn't see any reason for it. Am I, was I, am I missing something?
Madam Chair. They, the first commenter, the first one that was opposed to the applicant, that should be attached to a staff report. That person did indicate that it would affect their property values. Uh, the other comment, they did just say they were opposed. However, I did, the, the, this person did call me yesterday. We had a long conversation. And that, that was, that was the concern expressed to me at that time. So sorry, I, that was not something that was communicated to you before this.
Okay, okay, thank you. And thank you for that. I'm going to ask if the applicant. Or the applicant's representative would like to address the commission on the case this evening. Uh, Mr. Short, do you know if the applicant is present?
I did see one of, oh, the applicant. I do not, I have not checked to see if the applicant is present.
Okay, I'm not seeing any hands raised or being unmuted. The applicant does not have to be here. So on, hold on. Um. Let's see, David Bennett, I don't believe that is the applicant.
No, I believe that is a member of the family that was opposed to the application.
Okay, all right, very well. Then I'm going to, on, since the applicant is not here, I'm going to.
I'm here. I'm sorry, I'm here.
Okay, the applicant is?
Yes.
Okay, please state your, okay, thank you. Please state your name and address for the record. Um, sir, if you could please state your name and address for the record, and I would like to ask. If you have read the staff report and if you agree with the, with, with the conditions.
Mr. Verde, can you hear? I think we're having some technical difficulties, Madam Chair.
Yes, I do too. And I don't know how to fix them.
I don't either.
Hi, I can hear you. I can hear you.
Okay, and we can hear you now. Would you please state your name and address for the record? And I have asked, have you read and received the staff report and do you agree with the conditions?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and can you please state your name and address?
Okay, my name is Sucha Singh Verdi, and my wife is with me here, just Vinder Verdi. We're sitting, both of them sitting here. Her address is thirty-four hundred one-six-one Place Southeast Bellevue, Washington.
Okay, thank you. Um, do any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to ask if there is anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on the, on this case this evening. If so. Please raise your hand or unmute. Okay, okay, we have a David Bennett with your hand raised. Mr. Bennett, if you would like to please state your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Well, I'm chairman. Thank you very much. My name is David Bennett. I live at one fifty Wilson Street, Carlisle, Pennsylvania. My interest in this is that the property belongs to us. And we do not believe the other two owners and myself. That it is in the best interest of the overall development of that area. Which is a very large development. To have temporary buildings such as an RV placed in a permanent or semi-permanent feature factor. We prefer that the committee and the commission look at the proper development of hard brick. Hard stone or masonry buildings to give that entire area a site of permanency which it currently lacks. The development of property. The development of properties ought not to be scattered, wild or unplanned as it seems to appear to me. I thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bennett. Is there anyone else in the public that wishes to address the commission on the, on this case this evening? Okay, and seeing none, I'm going to close it to the public and I'm going to open it up to commission discussion. Commissioner Clifford.
I can make the, I can find the findings to approve it, they're actually doing it the right way, which is not always true out there.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Walters.
I, I agree with my fellow commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Burton.
Yeah, I can also make the findings.
Okay, Commissioner Williams.
I can make the findings for this.
Okay, Commissioner Best.
I can make the findings, the gentleman, Mr. Bennett, I said, did he say that he owned the property?
No, he's a neighbor.
He's a neighbor, he owns adjacent property, yeah, I think, I see his point, but what's going on here is fairly common in that area and most people don't come in for a permit. So I, I think I can make the findings.
Okay, Commissioner Ruggles.
Okay, I can agree with Commissioner Clifford and Commissioner Best and Commissioner Walters on this. I can make the findings and one other comment that they're doing the right thing, just as Commissioner Clifford has said, coming forward and getting a temporary or a CUP for this use. And there is a five-year timeframe for that, which I think would give people a little bit of latitude down the road to look at it again and say, well, maybe we have a good reason for opposing this and request that it not be renewed. But until then, I think it's quite appropriate, it's a very common practice without getting the commission's approval for it, so as I said, I can make the findings and that's that.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles, this is Chair Aunt Taveris and I will just say that I do agree with the comments made by my fellow commissioners. I can make the findings and with that, let's go ahead and move to a motion in a second for CUP twenty one zero seven seven.
I'll make a motion that we approve CUP dash twenty one dash zero zero seven.
A second time.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Williams and a second by Commissioner Walters to approve CUP twenty one dash zero seven seven. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
This is Chair Aunt Taveris, I also vote aye, CUP twenty one dash zero seven seven is approved. Okay, you know what, I think I've done something I've never done before. I think I skipped right over case number four, DRO twenty one dash zero one three. We went directly from case three to case five. On, the chair does have the option to rearrange on items on the agenda, but that was, that I did not mean to do that. Anyway, I would now like to call case number DRO twenty one dash zero one three. And I will also provide the same comments for this DRO that I gave on, for the one on Quintana Drive and Highway one eighty. All comments by the commissioners and the public must be in that very small scope of design review. With that, please, would staff please present?
Thank you, Madam Chair, this is Zach Schwartz with Planning and Zoning Staff and this case is DRO twenty one zero one three. It's the Village Camp Flagstaff Phases Three and Four. The owner of the subject property is North Winds Commerce Center LLC out of Phoenix. The applicant is Shepherd Westnitzer from Flagstaff. The location of the properties, so there are two separate parcels, one is one three one three zero and the other is one three four five zero, West Brannigan Park Road, this is in Belmont. And the two parcels together equal twenty point three seven acres. This request is for design review for RV park and RV storage uses. Just wanted to start with the vicinity map, so this is the Belmont area, here is Pilot and here is the Flagstaff Meadow subdivision, way over to the west and north Belmont, we have the two subject properties here. And actually, just north of this is where Phases One and Two of Village Camp Flagstaff are currently being constructed. Here is an aerial photo of the subject property, so you can see the western parcel has some vegetation on it, eastern parcel does not. Both parcels have frontage on Brannigan Park Road and sort of bisecting the two parcels is Forest Service Road one seventy one directly adjacent to the subject property. On the north side is Coconino National Forest. So for a project description for Phases Three and Four of Camp Village Flagstaff, the western parcel, which is also known as Phase Three, would include eighty-four full hookup RV park spaces. And the eastern parcel would have, for the first five years, there would be two hundred and thirty-eight RV storage spaces. And after that first five years, the applicant would place sixty-eight full, fully hooked up RV spaces on that property. So these uses are permitted by right in the CH ten thousand zone, that's heavy commercial zone. And this request is only about design review, as the chair has mentioned. So I wanted to show you the site plan for Phase Three or the western parcel. You can see that here's Brannigan Park Road and here is Forest Service Road one seventy one. The main entrance would come through on Forest Service Road one seventy one and of course, the RV spaces throughout. The applicant is also proposing an emergency access on Brannigan Parkway on sort of the northwest portion of the property. Here is a site plan of Phase Four for the first five years. So again, coming, getting the main entrance off of Forest Service Road one seventy one and also from Brannigan Parkway into a parking area. This building right here is the main registration building. Then adjacent to that over here, we have a cart barn and maintenance yard. And I'm sort of, I guess, the back end of the, of the parcel here is where we would have the two hundred and thirty-eight RV storage spaces for the first five years. And that would change into the sixty-eight RV spaces after the first five years. I have here an elevation of the proposed reception building, this is just the west elevation, so looking, I guess, if you were on Forest Service Road one seventy one, looking at the building, this is how it would look, but the other elevations are in your packet. And here's also a floor plan, but you can see that there is horizontal siding that is sorry, horizontal siding here, that is ship lap, that would be colored mahogany, we have vertical siding here. And all of that would be corrugated metal siding in a charcoal gray. We have a standing seam metal roof that has some angles and articulations to it. And, and we also have some, the applicant is proposing some stone veneer here and here. And that would be in mixed colors, a blended brown, gray and tan colors. And the storefront windows and doors would have glazing in a dark bronze. This is one of the elevations, also the west elevation for the cart barn. And you can see that it has, it's mostly that similar corrugated metal, that's charcoal gray colored. It also has windows and doors with windows that have the bronze glazing on it. And it has hollow metal doors with gray paint to match. I wanted to show you all on the site plan. As shown in the Belmont area plan, the Belmont area plan, this dotted line here is proposing that new developments include a footstr, or at least a multimodal path along the back. So we have the applicant as incorporated that in their design, there's an eight-foot wide foot, so Flagstaff Urban Trail standard. And so this is on Phase Four, the eastern parcel. And there's quite a lot of fencing on the property, so along the boundaries with Coconino National Forest, the applicant is proposing with this red dotted line, wildlife-friendly fencing. I don't think this is necessarily the final iteration of that, the staff has recommended a condition that the urban wildlife planner review that and make sure that it is truly wildlife-friendly fencing. Also, you can see along all the other property boundaries that we have the four-foot split rail fence is requested as well. Here's a landscaping plan and I know that it's too small for you to see on the screen, but I'm happy to, if the commission wants to look at it deeper, I can blow that up. Once the commission gets into discussion, it was also part of your packet in a full size. But as far as the landscaping plan, the applicant has provided a plan that has street frontage, building and parking landscaping as is required in the zoning ordinance. And the applicant has exceeded the minimum requirements of that landscaping. Also, so I wanted to show, this is an example of a cross-section here, so where the applicant would have a berm and the landscaping that was just discussed would be on top of the berm. So the applicant shows that along both parcels, along Brannigan Road, a three-foot berm with the vegetation on top. The applicant's plan does not show berms along Forest Service Road one seventy one and that is something that is a requirement of the zoning ordinance. I think there was some miscommunication between staff and the applicant on that, otherwise they probably would have added it to their plans. But in any case, staff is conditioning, the recommended conditions include berms also along Forest Service Road one seventy one with vegetation on top as shown here. As far as lighting, the applicant showed a photometric plan with a number, I guess, three different fixtures that were proposed. I know the lumen count was consistent with Zone Two standards as the area plan's design review guidelines ask for. Some of the fixtures were not fully shielded, you can see this fixture just goes right above the horizon and is not something that's approvable unless perhaps it was bent completely downward, because it looks like it does bend. But in any case, a, and there also were, so yes, that's a fixture that's not fully shielded and staff will require, staff will have additional review after the design review overlay that will make sure that we're meeting all the Zones Two standards as the design review guidelines require. And that is conditioned as recommended. As far as signage, there actually isn't a whole lot of signage proposed with the project. There are two different types of signs, so a twelve-foot entry monument that's shown here. It's a rusted steel frame with backlit lettering. And then we also have a six-foot wayfinding sign type that also would be a rusted steel frame with backlit lettering. I showed this in the staff report and, and here on the screen for you, just to show that the back lighting would look like this. But obviously, it would be their logo here. And they would have a wayfinding sign on both the west and the east parcel as you enter from Forest Service Road one seventy one. And one entry monument is shown on their signage plan and that's on Brannigan Park Road on Phase Four, the eastern parcel. There is actually an existing billboard on the western parcel, Phase Three. It's a legal non-conforming or grandfathered sign and staff is not sure exactly what the height or size of the sign is. The commission cannot require its removal because of its grandfathered status. But staff has made sure in the conditions that is very clear to the applicant and anybody else who comes to the, on the properties, that that billboard, in order to maintain his grandfather's status, must only advertise off-premise signs, which is the grandfathered nature of, of the sign. And it's been conditioned so that any face changes would be administratively reviewed by staff as far as design review overlay guidelines for color and that sort of thing. As far as consistency with the design review guidelines, I've written out many of the different portions of the the DRO guidelines in the staff report and I've just summarized them here, but if you'd like me to go into more detail, I'm happy to do it. Generally, the Belmont area plan, DRO guidelines ask for multimodal transportation accessibility for building design that's forest-influenced and rustic and industrial for materials and colors that are earth-tone, rusted steel, stone, landscaping that's meeting the minimum zoning ordinance requirements, fencing that's consistent with preferred materials and colors and lighting that's consistent with Zone Two standards. And staff believes that this request is consistent with those guidelines as conditions in the staff report. So if the commission is able to find that the request is conforming to those guidelines, staff recommends approval of case DRO twenty one zero one three, subject to the nine conditions of the staff report. I'm happy to take any questions from the commission at this time.
Just.
Yes, please go ahead.
Would like to mention one thing to words that I did look at, at the lighting plan very, very thoroughly. And when we get into the commission discussion, I will have an answer for your one question on the one light that is not shielded and we'll go from there, so otherwise, nothing else that I'm going to ask you about at this time. Just like, want to reassure you that I have looked at this very thoroughly.
Okay, thank, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. I am not seeing, Mr. Schwartz, I am not seeing anyone else unmuting or raising their hand. So I'm going to ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative is present and would like to address the commission this evening. If so, please state your name and address for the record. And I would like to ask if you have read the staff report and if you agree with the conditions. Mr. Schwartz, I'm not seeing the applicant.
Madam Chair, this is, this is Zach Schwartz with Planning Staff. I see that Guillermo has a phone and an iPhone separately here. Guillermo is part of the team that of Shepherd Westnester that's on the project. So it's Cassandra Pham that I see on here as well.
Okay, all right, would it be possible on Guillermo or Sandra, if you could unmute and address the commission? Okay, I'm thinking we're having technical issues, Mr. Schwartz, and I don't know how to fix it.
Madam Chair.
Madam, madam chair, this is, this is Scott Roberts. I was, I believe Guillermo right now is on the road, but Scott Roberts, ninety-eight fourteen East Legacy Lane, Scottsdale, Arizona. And I'm the owner and developer of Village Camp. And we've read the conditions and are happy to follow all those conditions and really looking forward to creating an amazing resort in your beautiful county.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. While I have you there, I'm going to ask if the commissioners have any questions for you. Um. I'm not seeing any. So I am.
One thing.
Okay, oh, there you go, Commissioner Ruggles, please go ahead.
Uh, yes, the only thing I want to do is to make sure that you understand one of the things that will happen with the, the lighting condition. And this is very simply because low-pressure sodium lighting is no longer available. And with the luminaire, lumen count that has been proposed, it would normally require low-pressure sodium lighting for all of the luminaires. However, because it is no longer available, what we have been requiring in the past because it is no longer available, what we have been requiring in the past is an equivalent. And that equivalent is narrow-spectrum amber lighting. And in my surveys of what is available in the market, there should be no problem meeting that requirement, which is what I'm going to request when we get to the commission discussion part of this. But I did want you to know about that ahead of topic, because it has been a little bit, initially, it's been a bit of a surprise to some applicants, but not all, definitely.
Yeah, we'd be happy to definitely research. We are big fans of LED lighting and we'd be happy to learn more about that and make sure we don't put it in anything that's going to be hard for us to replace and definitely make sure we match all the lumen requirements by the county.
Just want to make sure that you are aware of that, because it has caused problems in the past. But I would not be inclined, under any circumstance, to ask for something that was not available in the marketplace. That would be patently unfair and very arbitrary to do something like that. And I do not make requests for narrow-spectrum amber lighting or an application like this without knowing that the lighting is actually available. So thanks for your comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles, and thank you, Mr. Roberts. Is there, are there any other questions from the commissioners for the applicant? Okay, not seeing any. I'm going to go ahead and open it up to the public. If there is anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on this case this evening, please raise your hand or unmute. Okay, and I am not seeing any. So I'm going to go ahead and close it to the public, open it at commission discussion. Commissioner Clifford?
I have no problem with this. I think it's going to be, it's in, is part of the Belmont area plan design, and I can make the findings for it.
Okay, Commissioner Walters?
I too can make the findings. This is the third reiteration on this property, and I think this looks good. It's, it's going to be nice to get something out there. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Burton?
I think it looks good. I don't have any problems and I can make the findings.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams?
Yeah, I can make the findings for this project.
Okay, Commissioner Best?
I can make the findings.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles.
Okay, I can make the findings, however, with a modification to the condition dealing with lighting. Ms. Schwartz would pull that up. I see it there. I think very simply, put, condition five should read, all outdoor lighting shall be narrow-spectrum amber. And at that point, there is no necessity to put in, tell me the requirements in section four point three and lighting zone two. Okay, keep going. And shall be fully shielded. We want to leave that in there. Or you could say, all outdoor lighting shall be fully shielded, narrow-spectrum amber, and end it right there, period after amber. First sentence, Zach. We'll get in there with fewer words that way. Period after amber. And then the next sentence. All class-two lighting less than twenty-five hundred lumens shall be twenty-seven hundred KCCT or less. You want to strike that entire sentence. And we are good to go on that. And relative to the one light that was an upward-facing LED, and I believe on the lighting plan that is SC one, there was only one of those, a little over three thousand lumens. It appears that from the site plan that way, or the lighting plan that was intended to be upward-directed illumination of the monument sign. So having a requirement for fully shielded will eliminate that. I don't think we need to address that specifically. And the backlighting of the signage will also take care of any problems with visibility in the signage. So I am good with what you got there. And the rest of it, I think, is extremely well thought out, well-planned. I commend the developers with that. I can make the findings, by the way.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. This is Chair Antivarius. I do agree with the modifications that Commissioner Ruggles just made to condition number five. I can make the findings. And with that, I will accept a motion in a second, please.
Make a motion to approve case number DRO dash two one dash zero one three, as modified.
I will second that motion.
Okay, I have a, excuse me, I have a motion by Commissioner Walters and a second by Commissioner Ruggles to approve DRO two one dash zero one three. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
And this is Chair Antivarius. I also vote I, DRO twenty-one dash zero one three is approved and passes unanimously. The last item on the agenda this evening is a call to the public for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission this evening for items not on the agenda? If so, please unmute or raise your hand. And seeing none, my clock shows seven fifty-one PM and the meeting is adjourned. Good night, everyone, and I will see you in February.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Everybody.
Good night.
Good night, thanks.